Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the Rancho Mirage City Council meeting for Thursday, March 21, 2009. The council also serves as the library and observatory board, the housing authority, and the city council representing the redevelopment successor agency. So if you would all please stand for the flag salute led by our city attorney, Steve Quintanilla.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kristi, would you call the roll, please?
Certainly. Councilmember Hobart?
Here.
Councilmember Townsend?
Here.
Councilmember Wile?
Here.
Mayor Protem Smotrich?
Here.
And Mayor Kite?
Here. Thank you very much. Kristi has an announcement for us today concerning the next meeting on the agenda. So Kristi?
Yes, I just wanted to let everyone know that there will not be a city council meeting on April 4. The next regular city council meeting will be on April 9 at 1:00 p.m. And proper notice will go out of that as the date gets closer. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now moving on to non-agenda public comments. This is an opportunity for you, the public, to speak on issues that are not on the agenda, and we would hope that you'd hold your comments to three minutes. And if you filled out a yellow form, we'll be calling on you to speak. If you have not filled out one of these yet, if you would please get them from the city clerk, and so we'll have your name on record. And let's see, the first one was three people, Scott Robinson, Terry Nelson, and Loretta Nelson. Would you like to come forward?
Well, welcome. Thank you for having us. I'm Scott Robinson. I'm the CEO of Your Neighboring Boys and Girls Club in Cathedral City, and we proudly serve the families and youth here in Rancho Mirage, from Rancho Mirage Elementary School as well as Rancho Mirage High School. In fact, our last three Youth of the Year are all members and students from Rancho Mirage High School, so we're very proud of our partnership with our community here. But I'm here today to invite you as guests to our Champion of Youth Awards, where we'll be honoring many people from our Rancho Mirage community for their vision, enthusiasm, leadership, and courage to see past boundaries to help make a difference in the lives of our children. Kristi has invites for all of you, but some of the people that we will be honoring there is our very own council member, Mr. Charlie Townsend. We will be honoring Joe and Pat Manhart, William and Yvonne McCallum from Thunderbird, Greg and Elizabeth Grant, and the Rancho Mirage Women's Club. So there's a lot of people that have really embraced the outreach to help the youth in the community, and we would like to thank all of you and the city of Rancho Mirage for continuing to support our organization all these years. Thank you.
Well, let me just say that you guys do a fabulous job, Terry. And who's this young lady in the middle here?
I'm going to introduce her and tell you a little something. She'll talk here in a second. First of all, I'm the board chair for the Boys and Girls Club of Cathedral City, and I'm happy to be here. Mayor Kite and council members, I want to thank all of you for your support, your continued support over the years of our club and the kids. It's an amazing organization, and again, thank you. Charlie?
Yes.
I've got to call you out because you've got the warmest heart, and I thank you for your kindness and generosity and participation and support of our club.
I appreciate that, and I was never so taken when I had the tours several years ago and what you guys have done and the improvements and all that you give back to those kids. It's wonderful, and you guys have been 24/7 over there all the time, and including this lovely lady there, too. Looking forward to being with you, too.
And this is Loretta Nelson, my mother, and she's in a month going to be celebrating her 92nd birthday.
Oh, my God, that is wonderful. Congratulations.
And she's an ambassador of our club.
I know that. Terry, why don't you give the date again?
The date of this coming up? Of this event?
Yes.
It'd be Sunday, April 7.
Okay.
Okay.
And where is it?
At Aqua California Bistro.
And what time?
Here in Rancho Mirage.
What time?
At 3:00 to 5:00 p.m.
Very good.
Okay. And my mom would just like to say a few words.
Sure. I've been an ambassador for the Boys and Girls Club for quite some time, and if it wasn't for Scott, I don't know. He's just a special guy, and so is my son. And, but we want to have as many people to volunteer and help because it is such a reward. Those kids just love you. They come and hug you. They're like all your grandchildren or your own children. But I am very, very proud to be an ambassador for the Boys and Girls Club.
Well, I'm very proud of all of you guys, too.
And thank you, Charlie.
You're welcome.
I love those hugs.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Hey, thanks for being here today. Next speaker is Eric Ornelas.
Yes, good afternoon, Mayor Kite, city council members, staff, and guests. My name is Eric Ornelas. I think most of you are familiar with me as that guy from Sunnylands. I'm actually here today not as representatives of Sunnylands, but of the Rancho Mirage Chamber of Commerce, and I am a proud board member, newly-elected board member, and I'd like to give you an update on what the activities that are taking place with the new board, newly-installed, and let you know what's happening with the chamber. So the chamber is now fully-staffed, and we're making great progress. Our sales executives sold seven memberships last month. The recent Power Lunch at Norma's was very successful. It filled the patio with pasta-hungry networkers, and it was planned by our new operations and events manager, Rhonda Henry, who's doing an amazing job. Our executive director, Katie Stice, is now serving on the Board of Directors for the Children's Discovery Museum and will be installed as a Rancho Mirage Rotarian next week. Our staff in the office is yielding calls from visitors about 20 times a week now, and we're referring our members and Rancho Mirage services to them. The recent ribbon-cutting and grand opening at Okane's was amazing, chock-full of wall-to-wall people. It was great fun, very well-received by our community, and shared widely on social media. It was really a fantastic event. The mixer at Mission Hills Country Club, it featured our nonprofit members in the community, and it was a great success. I personally walked up to many of the other nonprofit members that were there just to learn what other nonprofits are here in the desert, and was really amazed at the amount and the kind of services that they're providing, and it was really a fantastic success. The mixer at the Old Spaghetti Factory yesterday was a great exposure for their business and a fun gathering for members and guests. I myself had never been to the Old Spaghetti Factory and was amazed at how beautiful that restaurant really is. It's really an amazing space, and I plan to go back for sure. The board and staff are working on some major projects. Major cleanup effort is happening with the database, the member database, and also we're working to clean up the QuickBooks software. The annual events are all being bid out and planned. Sponsorship packages are being created. The website and social media communications will be out for bid soon as we need to step up our technology efforts and our communications as a whole, our online communications. Next up is our annual State of the City address, April 12 at the Ritz-Carlton Ranch Mirage. Currently, attendance is just over 175, so we anticipate that to be an amazing event as well. And so lastly, on behalf of the board, I'd like to thank all of you for your support of the Rancho Mirage Chamber of Commerce, its members, and the local business community. Your support is greatly appreciated and valued, so I thank you.
Eric, thanks for being here. On behalf of our council, certainly you guys have turned that organization around, and it is great. You've got a great board, and I think there's a whole new feeling on that board that things are really going forward. So congratulations for being on the board.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
Okay, the next speaker is Elizabeth Grant.
I'm also from the Boys and Girls Club of Cathedral City. My name is Elizabeth Grant, and I serve on the Board of Directors of the Boys and Girls Club of Cathedral City, and I also volunteer in our homework lab and our reading lab there. At the Boys and Girls Club, we provide first- to 12th-graders opportunities in technology, character and leadership development, education and career development, health and life skills and arts, in addition to things you might already be familiar with, such as sports, fitness, and recreation. These are many of your kids, the kids not only of Cathedral City but of Rancho Mirage, and we have the opportunity and the responsibility to care for and invest in their futures and the future of Rancho Mirage through them. They will be the next voting citizens and leaders of our communities. I'd like to introduce you to the friends of the Boys and Girls Club of Cathedral City. It's a brand-new opportunity for the members of our community to invest in these children's lives. You can become a friend of the Boys and Girls Club of Cathedral City by committing to a recurring donation of just $10 or more per month. Our website donation page is set up to make it that easy for you, and in addition, I'm asking that you help us spread the word about this by telling your friends and family about this opportunity. Our collective goal is $2,500 a month, and we can do that quickly if we all band together. I'm hoping that each of you will decide to be a part of this and become a friend of the Boys and Girls Club of Cathedral City. I have some sign-up cards that I'll leave with Kristi, and thank you for your time.
Thank you for being here today. Okay, our next speaker is Wally Melendez.
Glad to see you. I'm Wally Melendez, as everybody knows, and I live in this vicinity between Rancho Mirage and Palm Desert, and I'm a student at COD, College of the Desert, the College of the And I think I'm the oldest student there, and most of the guys there and girls are freshmen from high school. This morning, I saw something very interesting, and I brought this subject before. There was a recruiter from Redlands University recruiting students, and for a while now, two minutes, for a while now, I've been espousing that we're losing a lot of talent at COD because we just train our guys and girls there for a two-year degree when what's needed is a four-year degree, a bachelor's degree. And I just thought, I used to live in the vicinity of California City, and one guy there in California City wanted to put a university in California City, and I'm there at the meeting, and I say, "What are you talking about? You don't even have a college, and you want a university." Well, apparently, anybody can have a university from part of gathering. So I'm thinking, Redlands is still a long drive away from this vicinity that I happen to like and live in. And so I'm thinking, well, Rancho Mirage, since it's a sister city of Palm Desert, they ought to put up a university, and since everybody's doing it, it seems like it shouldn't be that So as always, I'm the guy that throws out ideas, you know? I should charge for throwing out ideas, but I don't, but I'm the guy that throws out ideas, and that's an idea. I'm always throwing out ideas. And I'm thinking about it, and I'm getting excited because I think it's a good idea. So if you've got some extra space and so on, and you want to be rich and famous, you'd have the Rancho Mirage University. What's wrong with that? Thank you.
Could we hold the meetings in the observatory?
Say what? What did you say?
I said, could we hold the meetings of the classes in the observatory?
Of course.
Thank you, Wally. Is there anybody else in the audience who has not filled out a request to speak card but would like to speak on an item? Okay, well, thank you very much for being here today, and we'll now move on to the next item on the agenda, which is city council and board member comments, and we'll start with Councilwoman Smotrich. Iris?
Well, thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. I have two announcements. One is very short, but preceding that, I just wanted to acknowledge someone in our audience who's here year after year, week after week, and that is Connie Velobos, and she's having her birthday today. They always sit in the second row, and we wanted to wish her happy birthday. So thank you, thank you. I don't know if I should say how many years. I know you're very proud, but we'll wait until next time. The second announcement was to remind everyone who has not bought any tickets for our speaker series that it is not too late. We're going to be showing for our last presentation Elizabeth Vargas on Tuesday, March 26, so there is still time to buy some tickets, and since she is the final speaker, you won't have this opportunity till, again, next year. There are limited seats available, and if you go to rmspeakerseries.com to purchase your tickets, you'll be able to do it, and if you have a little difficulty, you can always call City Hall, and they'll be more than glad to help you with it. But the main announcement is that we now are approaching our summer. We are in the springtime of our year, and soon we'll be in this hot days of summer, and we will soon be in the hot days of fun hiking in our Rancho Mirage trails. So on the screen are some safety tips to keep in mind when hiking on our beautiful Rancho Mirage trails, because we always want to keep everyone safe. So plan ahead, use common sense, carry a map, which is very much available in Rancho Mirage City Hall. It's a beautiful map. You can just fold it up, put it in your pocket. Bring some extra water. Water's the most important part, needless to say, and people always seem to kind of underestimate how much water is going to be needed. Another big, important feature is tell somebody where you're going and when you plan to return. People tend to sometimes hike alone, and it's important for people to know when they're planning to return. So if you don't have good food, if you don't have the right fuel, you're not going to have a whole lot of fun. So bring some nuts, some trail mix, some protein bars. Eat more and drink more than you think you really need. It's important to eat before, during, and after you're hiking. Eat before you're hungry and drink before you are thirsty. Do not hike alone if possible. There's always lots of people on the trails. Maybe you can make a new friend. So share the fun with your friends. Don't overestimate your hiking capabilities or those of your hiking partners. Be responsible for your own safety and the safety of others in your group. Also, stay on the hiking trails. They are designed for your safety, so please don't wander off the trails to the unknown territory. Some more things to be aware of, be a lightweight. Hiking sticks can take some of the stress off of your legs, and they're a lot of fun to carry with you. Wear broken-in, lightweight hiking boots. Nothing worse than going hiking with some brand-new shoes. Small, lightweight flashlights would be really important. You never know how long you're going to be out there. Bring extra batteries and extra bulbs, and bring and wear some sunscreen. Wear your sunglasses, and always wear a hat. Please don't overdo it. Give yourself a rest whenever possible. Take a break. Sit down. Prop up your legs on a rock. Eat and drink. Enjoy the views and enjoy the people and the conversation you're with. Next time, make sure you accurately identify your hiking time. Plan on taking twice as long to hike uphill as it would take to hike downhill. Always let someone to know when you're going and when you're returning. Be respectful of everyone on the trail. Respect all the signage. Make sure you keep it clean. Take your trash out with you. Be friendly to fellow hikers. And so very important for those of you who like to bring your pets, make sure that you pick up after them. So stop by Rancho Mirage City Hall, pick up a great hiking trail map, and there are lots of levels of hiking, so choose one that suits your needs and your capabilities, and just have a great time. And thank you again, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Iris. Councilmember Ted Wile. Ted?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a development update. As the city of Rancho Mirage continues to develop, the expectation of the 92270 cachet remains stronger than ever. The Del Webb Rancho Mirage community has been building and selling homes at a furious pace. 200 homes have been built and sold, with many other spaces awaiting build-out. From the onset of construction of the beautiful Del Webb Rancho Mirage community, there has been much work completed in the areas surrounding the project. Currently, the project is in its second phase of undergrounding Southern California Edison power lines and poles along the north side of Dynashore Drive. The project will transfer all above-ground infrastructure to underground facilities and remove overhead power lines, giving residents an unobstructed view of the beautiful San Jacinto Mountains. The anticipated completion date is the end of June. Del Webb is also widening Los Alamos Road from one single southbound and one northbound lane to four total lanes, two southbound and two northbound. This will include a landscaped, median parkways and sidewalk on the east side of the roadway. The project is on pace to be completed by April 1. If you go by there and look at it now, it looks just absolutely magnificent. I want to thank our Public Works Department, Jesse Eckenroth and his dedicated team, for their diligence in keeping residents and business owners well-informed of possible traffic delays and detours. Needless to say, they have had their hands full, not only with the amount of construction going on in that area, but of course with the recent rains and the amount of damage to our roads. So again, congratulations, Jesse and your team. Speaking of traffic delays, April 16 is the tentative opening date of Krispy Kreme at the Monterey Marketplace, and it's sure to draw a large crowd. Don't worry about too long a wait, as the doughnut machine in the store, hold on to your hat, produces 400 doughnuts per minute. 400 per minute. This will be the Coachella Valley's one and only location, the closest being in Menifee or Ontario. The addition will draw more traffic to one of our larger shopping centers. For those of you on a diet, don't be concerned about being spotted, as Krispy Kreme has a drive-thru, and you can eat the doughnut in your car, so no one will ever know. I'm also happy to announce that the recent opening of Okane's Irish Pub was certainly a success. As you can see, it looks great. Be sure to make your way to Rancho Mirage Marketplace for an authentic Irish experience. There's a lot going on in our city from the standpoint of economic development. There's always a challenge because the marketplace has changed dramatically over the last three, four years. As you know, so much has become an internet world, and so retail is a challenge, and yet it also brings opportunities. So we're growing. Our commercial areas are growing, and we're very, very optimistic about the future. So thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ted. Are you going to bring doughnuts to us all on that day?
Absolutely. You wait right here. They'll be here.
Take five minutes, Wires.
You got it.
Okay. Charlie Townsend, you have a comment?
Well, I will, but I think my three minutes was taken up by my mutual associations out there, my sponsors of the Boys and Girls Club, and I will just say, please do try to support the Cathedral City Boys and Girls Club. They do an outstanding job. They work so very, very hard, and it's a great group. It does benefit the kids in Rancho Mirage as well, the Coachella Valley, so thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. Councilman Hobart?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to inform people that don't know that we have scheduled a study session concerning the Salt and Sea. It's going to be held here in these chambers on April 9, 10:00 a.m. in the morning, a two-hour meeting where we'll have people who are representing the various interests and ideas concerning solution to the problems that we have related to the Salt and Sea. So if you're interested in that issue, and I think almost everybody is, concerning the potential health problems that are down the road if we don't solve the issues, I urge you to attend, enjoy yourselves, and put it again on your calendar, April 9, 10:00 a.m. here at City Hall.
Thank you, Dana.
That's a Tuesday.
Pardon me?
The city attorney reminded me that that date is a Tuesday.
Okay.
And that's good news. You know, it's good to know what day something's on.
It's also a council day, but that's the day that we moved the council meeting to, that Tuesday.
How lucky.
Yeah, okay.
A two-for-one.
As Rancho Mirage continues to flourish, so does its arts community. Annually, the Rancho Mirage Cultural Commission honors its amazingly talented artists and artisans during the Rancho Mirage Artist Studio Tour. This Saturday at 9:30, we'll begin the self-guided tour, featuring media of all kinds, from hand-torn bowls made of local wood to award-winning ceramics to eye-popping photography and everything in between. This exciting visual arts event is now in its sixth and biggest year. We have been very pleased to debut Student Art this year. Along with their art teacher, Toby Allen Bresson, we'll welcome the work of seven Rancho Mirage High School students. Go Radlers! They will be displaying original work themed around social, political, and cultural issues. The tour begins with registration at the Rancho Mirage Library, and you can do that anytime after 9:30, and we'll have a brief welcoming comment around 9:45, and then everybody can leave on the tour. Participants will receive a map and a pass before heading out for the Day of Discovery. We look forward to seeing you all at the Sixth Annual Rancho Mirage Artist Studio Tour. For more information, please visit our website, www.rancho mirage ca.gov. Should be a lot of fun. Don't miss it. Every year, it gets better and better, and we not only have the artist work in their homes now, but we also display it at the library. So hope to see you there, 9:30 on Saturday morning. Okay, that ends the council comments, and we'll now move on to approval of the minutes from the March 7 regular meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve.
There's a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Please vote.
And motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Now move on to the consent calendar, and this will be presented by Isaiah Hegerman, our city manager. Isaiah?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the city council, you have five items.
you have five items on your consent calendar today for consideration. Item number one is to waive the full reading of all ordinances introduced or adopted pursuant to this agenda. Item number two is the receive and file of the annual board and commission reports. Item number three are two SAF awards to qualified nonprofits for a total of $2,000, $1,000 to each nonprofit. Item number four, you have one contract for consideration. And item number five are demands, and staff is here to answer any questions.
Thank you, Isaiah. Any comments, questions from the council? Any questions from anybody in the audience regarding these items? Okay, seeing none, we'll come back to the council. And could I have a motion?
I'll move to accept the consent calendar.
I'll second that.
There's a motion and a second. Would you please vote?
And motion carries, 5-0.
Thank you. Now, we'll move on to reports and informational items. Item number six is an update of the 2020 Rancho Mirage Writers Festival by Aaron Espinoza, library director. Aaron, good morning, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mayor Kite and city council, Mr. Hegerman. I appreciate the opportunity to stand before you in front of those in attendance and those watching on RMTV to discuss the Rancho Mirage Writers Festival. For this presentation, I'm here as the proud executive director of the Rancho Mirage Writers Festival. This year, our team led by festival founder Jamie Kabler did what some people said could not be done. Our festival got better. For three days in January, the Rancho Mirage Library and Observatory was transformed into the setting for America's Best Writers Festival, and we did not disappoint. This year's list of authors was second to none. At what other writers' festival do you get to see Governor Jerry Brown talking with senior advisor and deputy chief of staff to President George W. Bush, Karl Rove? Or get the opportunity to listen to Tom Hanks and the writer of the Longmire TV show Craig Johnson? While also getting the opportunity to take a picture with an M60 tank and Dwight Eisenhower's Jeep? The answer is nowhere. Our festival has become the Trailblazer Festival in which others now look for us to set the standard. None of our successes would be possible without the continuous support of you, our city council. And for that, we give you our heartfelt thanks to each and every one of you. For those sitting on the dais, you know what an incredible staff we have. But I wanted to make sure that we publicly thank our remarkable staff for their hard work, support, and continuous suggestions on how to improve our festival. It is a complete team effort. At the 2019 festival, Pico Ayer, British-born American essayist and novelist, best known for his travel writings, said, "It strikes me that now you have the most starry and invigorating list of writers I've ever seen gathered in one place: politicians, pundits, travelers, historians, and wonderful actors. You also have far and away the most distinguished audience members, so experienced and engaged and sharp. But what you also offer us is definitely the most well-organized, thoughtful, seamless, and glamorous, elegant celebration of words and ideas any of us will ever likely encounter. I've been traveling the literary festivals for 30 years now, and often ones in this country that look similar to this, but I have never found one to match your entertainment, stimulation, sophistication, and comfort." As we bid farewell to the 2019 festival, we start focusing on our attention on the 2020 festival. One aspect that our team wanted to improve was the accessibility of the festival at the reader level. So, through some ingenuity and infrastructure changes, we have developed a way to increase our reader passes from 500 to 750. That's a 50% increase in reader passes. On March 1st, passes went on sale, proving again that the Writers Festival is the hottest ticket in town. We sold out in a mere three hours. In addition to selling out our reader passes, as of today, we have only a few golden and platinum angel spots left. Today, we are 48 days past the close of the 2019 festival, and we have already collected 91% of our operating budget for the 2020 Writers Festival. Why such the excitement? Let's take a look at a few of our authors. Actors Michael Douglas and Jane Fonda. James Patterson, one of the most prominent writers of our time, who has sold more than 30 million books. Doris Kearns Goodwin, a Pulitzer Prize winner, biographer, historian, and political commentator. The 14th Librarian of Congress, Carla Hayden. Carla is the first woman and the first African-American to hold that post. Returning authors include Bill Brands, John Meacham, Karl Rove, and Brett Stevens. We have many other authors, including some who will be up for the National Book Award and/or the Pulitzer Prize. The Writers Festival is only 317 days away, so our staff is already diligently planning and making changes to make this the best one yet. We also want to remind everyone about all the other amazing programs that we are offering our community throughout the year, free of charge. The Rancho Mirage Writers Festival Book Club, Film Club, and the Rancho Mirage Writers Series. In the past year, the Writers Festival has sponsored 15 programs, which has brought in 1,893 people in attendance. In addition to the programs, the Writers Festival has also made a donation to the Rancho Mirage Library and Observatory Foundation to support our collection development. Several of our upcoming programs include, on April 9th, Sam Schwartz, author of No One at the Wheel, Driverless Cars, and On the Road to the Future. The next day, we welcome New York Times bestselling author Harlan Coben speaking on his new book, Runaway. And to round out our season, on May 6th, a Writers Festival favorite, Douglas Brinkley, will be speaking on his new book, American Moonshot: John F. Kennedy and the Great Space Race. Our team is always looking for new opportunities to give back to our community. Authors, angels, readers, continue to thank us for the amazing opportunity. And we could not be prouder of the relationship between the city of Rancho Mirage and the Rancho Mirage Writers Festival. I want to thank you for the opportunity to present today as well as for the opportunity to lead this amazing festival. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Aaron. Excellent report. Is there any questions or comments from the council?
Yes. Aaron, it's amazing. And the creator of the Writers Festival is here. I'd like Jamie Kabler to please stand and be acknowledged. Jamie, you are... Jamie, you are a wonder with what you've done here. You have created an international event that I cannot get enough comments when I am speaking to groups that do not talk about the Writers Festival and the success. And we've talked about this from this dais and before, how exciting it is for the literary world. And Aaron, this is to your credit as well, that this function takes place in a public forum as opposed to some very fancy edifice of some kind. It's a public facility, and the writers are very, very excited about it. But again, Jamie, thank you so much for your contribution. Aaron, we appreciate all the hard work. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ted. This festival has gone from absolutely nowhere five years ago to probably the number-one demand in the country for tickets. So, you guys are amazing to get those tickets out because people are out there standing in line the same day they go on sale. But great job, great job, Jamie. We're so glad you're working with us and providing this kind of opportunity for our city.
Very good. Aaron, can we still follow this on the web?
Yes.
As I did.
Absolutely. So, you can see our videos as well as our upcoming events at www.rmwritersfestival.org.
Yes, Mayor.
Dana?
Since we introduced Jamie just a moment ago, nobody could see him. Jamie, could you just come up to the podium there? And we can praise famous men while you're there.
City council and mayor, thank you.
This is the person who has accomplished what many thought could never be accomplished. Good work.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. I'm very proud of the fact that we use Rancho Mirage TV and our own YouTube channel and our website and C-SPAN. So that, Aaron, how many people have watched viewing? We have now 400 talks up over the last six years. What's our total viewership?
We're over a million.
Over a million viewing all from all over the world. So, this is really... And people say, "I can't afford to go to the Writers Festival." I said, "You know, you can watch it all at home for free." And that's a gift from the city council and from all of us to make this accessible. And thank you so much. Very proud.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Any other comments from the audience?
I would just like to also add my thanks, not only to Aaron, but to Jamie. You know, from the first day I met Jamie, I had always referred to him as the amazing Jamie Kabler. And day after day and year after year, he proves it over and over again. And with the Writers Festival remaining only at our library and with the featured authors that he's been able to bring in, and it's just quite a remarkable experience for the authors and for our audiences. And as you mentioned, that for the people who don't have the opportunity to see these authors in person, all you have to do is turn on Channel 17 if you live in Rancho Mirage, and you can see all the lectures and appreciate a close-up. And the kudos goes to all of you. And we couldn't be more proud of everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Aaron. Appreciate your comments today. Item number seven today on your agenda is an update of the Frank Sinatra Bridge project, brought to us by our public works director, Jesse Eckenroth. Jesse, good morning, good afternoon. Put your mic on, too.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Can you guys bring up the PowerPoint, please? I know the bridge has been somewhat elusive to pin some dates down on, but it's been a goal of mine to keep the council updated on the project. So, this being one of our biggest projects, I want to take this time to just give everyone an update on where we stand on the bridge. So, we're going to talk about the current design and the funding status for our bridge as of today. So, the bridge design process... I'm sitting on the wrong way. We have funding programs. So, we have funding earmarked from Caltrans for our bridge. We've completed preliminary design. We have obtained environmental clearance. We're at the 65% design completion. And right now, we're really focusing on the hydraulic analysis. The hydraulic analysis goes hand-in-hand with the 65% design because you can't model how the water flows through the channel without having a basic design, a footprint of the bridge. After we complete the hydraulic analysis, we'll move to a 95% complete design simultaneously while we acquire right-of-way. We'll go into a final design after that, and we'll issue an RFP, and we'll award the project and construct. So, these are the main goals and the processes that we're going to go through for the bridge. For this presentation, I really want to focus on hydrology because we are going through the hydraulic analysis right now to finish our design of the bridge up. And that's really just focusing on how the water moves through the channel. So, the hydraulic analysis really has two key components that we focus on. One is water surface elevation, and that is whether the channel has the capacity to carry the entire stormwater runoff without overflowing the banks. And the second, just as important, but probably less known to everyone, is the scour or what we call more commonly erosion, the impacts that the water has on the channel. So, can the structure of the channel and the facilities within the channel remain uncompromised during storm events? So, the scour potential of the channel has a huge impact on how we design the bridge. If we were to take this bridge over, let's say Interstate 10, scour would not be an issue. But our bridge is going over what's considered a navigable waterway by the Army Corps of Engineers. So, we have to consider the impacts beyond what a bridge would have to consider if it weren't over a channel. So, when we talk about water surface elevation, this is a picture of a flood. The water surface elevation is represented by this white line on the top. So, when we talk about water surface elevation at the storm, the water surface elevation was at that point during the storm. For scour and erosion, the white frame there kind of highlights where there's been some erosion on the banks. And that's typically what we... When we consider scour, that's what we're talking about. The other type of scour that we need to consider on a channel is long-term scour or what's referred to as incision. The picture on the top, right here, is a very young channel. And what's below it represents the channel bed. And over time, this is a picture of a channel that has come to an equilibrium point. And you can see that what is below the channel is a lot less than on the top. So, the channel becomes deeper. And your water surface elevation decreases when you consider long-term scour, incision. And this is important particularly for our bridge because the further down the channel bed is, the lower our bridge can be. And that's a consideration that we have made very important to CVWD as we're going through this design process. So, the current condition of the channel, this is just an aerial view, but you can see where the water typically runs. I'm trying to get my mouse to work here. So, this is the typical path that the water will come down. And over the years, we have some buildup, and the channel bed is a little bit higher than it has been in years past. So, what happens is Frank Sinatra, right now, acts as a speed bump. So, what's called aggradiation. As the water comes down the channel, Frank Sinatra slows the water down. When the water and the velocity is decreased, the sediment in the soil drops out of the water, and it begins to stack up like it has in this picture. And it will stack up all the way back up the channel, in our case, to the Depey Palm Bridge. So, this is a typical current condition out there. Here's another picture of the aggradiation. In this picture, it's hard to see, but we have removed a lot of the dirt in front of the culvert. So, the culverts are open. But if you were to take the level of the channel bed and just take it straight across, you can see it's about level with the top of Frank Sinatra Drive. So, as the city and CVWD have gone back and forth on hydraulic analysis, we've made the argument, the city's made the argument, that the bottom of the channel is below the top of the roadway. CVWD has taken the stance that the top of the roadway is the bottom of the channel. And the reason that we have done some analysis that indicates that the bottom of the channel, where the green line is at, represents a more accurate depiction of what we think the bottom of the channel is. And that is important because when we consider the height of the bridge... The height of the bridge is set by the bottom of the channel. So, the lower the bottom of the channel starts, So the lower the bottom of the channel starts, the lower our overall bridge design height's going to be.
Why does CVWD take this position compared to ours?
I'll probably answer that by the time I'm through with here. So the height consideration is important. These are some artist renditions. As you can see from the picture on the left, that's the corner of Deval and Frank Sinatra. So we're anticipating that corner's going to come up about six feet. So the higher the channel bed is, obviously, the higher that's going to come up with it when the bridge comes up on top of it. The picture on the right is from a backyard of a resident on Deval, and that's the bridge in the background. So we have made it very clear to CVWD that we want this bridge to be no higher than it has to be. So that's some of the reasons we've spent the time we have to go through the technical analysis with CVWD. So this is just a rendition of the side of the bridge. So I want to talk about what's at risk for CVWD and why CVWD really wants the channel to be in a state where they think it's safe. And that's because they protect three main things that are in the channel. One is the concrete liner that's in the channel. Two is there are water lines that run through the channel, as well as sewer lines that run through the channel. And all of those are protected by the amount of dirt that's on top of them. So this is just a typical section of a channel liner. What's going to show up as highlighted right now, so those top two right there, that's typically what you see when you look in the channel. So in Rancho Mirage, we've natina'd a lot of this, so this would be that, the brown channel liner that you see on the side of the channel. That high, the third highlight right there represents the dirt. So the channel liner actually extends down further, but you typically don't see that because it's covered with dirt. And what CVWD is trying to protect is the bottom of the cutoff wall. So at that point right there, they, CVWD does not want erosion to occur beyond that limit because as it does, it degrades the structural integrity of that channel liner. So that's one thing that CVWD considers when they're talking about the channel bed. Here's some historical pictures that I actually pulled off the internet. This is Tuckwitz Bridge in 1938. This was obviously mainly caused from scour. So you can see there was a lot of erosion that happened around here. This is Monterey Avenue around 1980. I have updated pictures from Valentine's Day. I just didn't have time to put them in this presentation, but we have new pictures now. So probably one of the most recent events that happened where we had some scour impacts was to the Jefferson Bridge in 2010. So it doesn't look, from this picture, it doesn't look like there was a lot of scour at this site, but it was enough to expose the sewer line. And that's a live sewer line that's dumping into the channel. So this is a whitewater channel, and, I'll get the mouse to work here, showing up a little bit. So the top of the, or the bottom of the channel was around here before the storm. As the storm came through, it scoured, it broke the pipe, and there is a live sewer line that's dumping into the channel. This picture here shows some of the clay pipe that's laying in the channel after the storm came through. So what CVWD has done to avoid this happening in the future is develop new guidelines to protect against infrastructure failure, specifically that's caused by scour. So they have a couple mitigating infrastructure requirements now. One is grade control structures, and two is the extension of concrete channel linings. And the Jefferson Bridge, the picture that we just saw with the sewer main, they had some repairs on that bridge, which included both a grade, grade control structure and a concrete liner extension. So this is a picture, just to give you a scale of what CVWD did at this site after that event came through and scoured some of the soil around the bridge. So this was the original concrete liner here, and they are adding all the way down to here. This is a man down here. The scale of this project is pretty enormous. So again, these are the men working down here. This is a picture just to give us kind of a scale of what they did at this bridge. And this is eventually going to get concrete over the top of it. So here's a picture of the concrete being placed over the rebar reinforcement. You know, the original channel bed elevation was probably around right here. So it's a quite large hole that they dug there. On top of extending the liner, they've also covered this water line with articulated concrete block. This was all excavated and then covered with articulated block to protect it against future scour. This is another picture, kind of just to give scale. So that's a very large bulldozer, or a dozer that's in the front there. And in the background of the picture are two large scrapers. Again, this is a pretty massive project that they did to protect their water lines here in the channel. So in the front of the bridge where the sewer line broke, there was some additional improvements that they did as well to keep the sewer line from breaking. They encased a new sewer line in a steel casing. So that's what you see here, is a water line inside of a steel casing. So that water line will get a steel casing that's welded around it, and then they fill the sides of it up with sand so it can't settle. Once that's complete, they cover it with dirt, compact it, and then they put articulated block over the top of that as well. So here's a picture of the articulated block being laid down on top of the sewer line. So the scale of the project for the amount of scour is rather impressive. This is post the improvements. So there's the grade control structure. And something important to note is this is, this grade control structure is downstream of their bridge. And a key component is that you can see the water surface elevation drops as it goes over the grade control structure. The velocity of the water increases, and the water surface elevation drops. So this is a key component that we are using in the design of our grade control structure. So after the rain is gone, that's what you see in the channel at Jefferson Bridge. Most of it was backfilled. You see some of the grade control structure on the top right there. Oops, wrong way. So that's highlighted right there, and that's what you see post-project. Everything else is backfilled with dirt. So there's new technical guidance post-Jefferson. One is dealing with water surface elevation. CVWD released new design manuals in January of 2014, and CVWD adopted ordinance 1234.2, which changed bridge design criteria in 2017. So this is when we're really in the thick of designing our bridge. We get new ordinance that comes out from CVWD, and we have to put the brakes on and do some redesign work. In addition to the water surface elevation side of the house, the scour guidance was replaced. So CVWD is replacing their current guidelines with draft guidelines that we're using for the Frank Sinatra Bridge, all as a result of what happened at Jefferson. So how has the new technical guidance affected the Frank Sinatra Bridge? Well, obviously, the observation of what happened to Jefferson Bridge has caused CVWD to design or change the criteria for anything that goes over the whitewater channel. Our bridge obviously goes over the whitewater channel. So number two, the city's hydraulic modeling submissions to CVWD, which we submitted in 13, 14, 16, 17, and 18, require updating based on the newly adopted CVWD water surface ordinance and draft scour guidelines. So this is a copy of a submission we did in 2017. So you can see it's rather lengthy, it's not numbered, there's probably 400 pages in here. And it's a, it's an engineering technical memorandum. I mean, it even goes so far as we do, we drill holes at the Frank Sinatra location, and they take the sand through a sieve, and they determine how big the sand is, even the particles of sand, and they determine how much scour can happen just based on the size of the sand and the depths. So we've, we are in the process of revising, step three, is we're in the process of revising our modeling submission based on these new ordinances. And this is a time-consuming process because CVWD has an agency that reviews the technical aspects of the report, and that takes time for them to give that report back to CVWD. CVWD reviews it, they bring their comments back to us, we clarify the comments, our consultants address the comments, we send it back to CVWD, they kick it back off to their consultants. So it is not that the city hasn't been responsive, or that CVWD hasn't been responsive, it's just a very time-consuming effort to agree on a 500-page technical report. So in 2018, we submitted a final hydraulic report, and in our report, we did not recommend a grade control structure. And that would increase the current capacity of the existing channel by lowering the channel bed, and it would subsequently lower the water surface elevation when compared to a system that incorporates an above-grade ground control structure. CVWD did not agree with the method or the results of the 2018 hydraulic report and is requiring the city to implement some type of channel infrastructure improvements beyond the city's originally intended scope of work due to the removal of the Frank Sinatra Low Water Crossing. So the stance, CVWD's stance is that the Frank Sinatra Low Water Crossing acts as a grade control structure. So by removing that, it would allow the channel to go, the channel bed to go back down maybe six to eight feet, and that would make the condition worse in the channel because you would be that much lower to your water lines, your sewer lines in the bottom of the channel liner. So there's really three things that we have been asked to do. One is the possibility to consider a grade control structure. Two is additional protection of the channel liner. And three is additional protection of the 24-inch CVWD water line that's on the north side of the Frank Sinatra Bridge. So right now, there is, just north of the bridge, there's a 24-inch main water line that is under the bottom of the channel. So in meeting CVWD's requirements, this is a preliminary grade control structure that we have designed and submitted to CVWD. So to kind of give you a bearing on where we sit, the black that's highlighted right there is Frank Sinatra Drive. So if you were standing on top of Frank Sinatra Drive, you would be looking east, and this is north, this is upstream, and this is south. So these four gray columns represent the columns that would hold up the bridge. That blue right there is the 24-inch water line that's just north of the Frank Sinatra Low Water Crossing right now. This gray that's getting highlighted is the proposed grade control structure. So this is the new concrete structure we're proposing to put under the bridge, and the channel bed elevation right now is that brown that's still left of your screen. So the top of the grade control structure would be even with the top of the channel bed right now. The blue line right here represents the water line in a 100-year flood. So the point I made earlier about the water after it goes over the grade control structure as it increases velocity and the water elevation drops, the reason we've proposed to put our grade control structure on the upstream side, as you can see, the water surface elevation as it comes over the grade control structure, it drops as it goes under the bridge. CVWD has a requirement that there has to be four feet of free space between the water surface and the bridge. So by putting the grade control structure on the upstream side of the bridge, it allows the bridge to be lower than if we put it on the downstream side of the bridge. So we have to keep this, what's highlighted in red right there, that has to be four feet of space between our bridge and the water surface during a 100-year event.
So Jesse, can you, can you go back? So CVWD put a requirement on the city, and staff took that as an opportunity to say, okay, we've just been handed this requirement, and they figured out a way to do it that reduced the height of the bridge. So they took a mitigation measure and didn't just implement it, they came up with a way to implement it so that it worked in our favor by reducing the bridge height. By the way that the water will flow over that mitigation measure, it, that blue line that trends across shows the water line, that allowed us even within this mitigation measure to be thoughtful of trying to do everything we can to reduce the height of the bridge. So it was a great job by the Public Works to...
Thank you. The other thing to note, too, is that, you know, when we looked at how the Jefferson Bridge was tackled, basically, they took two different projects. They protected their sewer line in the front of the bridge, and then they did a grade control structure behind the bridge. Well, our grade control structure is encompassing the water lines, and not only is it acting as a grade control structure, but it is protecting that 24-inch main water line that's on the north side of the bridge. So just kind of get your bearings on it. That brown represents the whitewater channel. The blue is where that 24-inch water line is. The grade control structure would go in the channel, cover the water line, and then the Frank Sinatra Bridge would lay over the top of that. So from a bird's-eye view, this is the existing Frank Sinatra Drive. And what we'd see when we're done with the grade control structure is it would almost look like another channel liner. I tried to do it brown to match the natina there, but you would see a little bit of that, just like we saw on the Jefferson Bridge. Let's go back to the Jefferson Bridge. So something similar to this, where it almost looks like the liner on the side, is what we'd see on the upstream side. And I think we'll see a little bit of this on the downstream side as well. So that's just for visual. So besides the grade control structure, there's a safety enhancement that we're working on with Caltrans. And our existing design right now has a sidewalk on the north side of the bridge. And what we're trying to do is propose a sidewalk not only on the north side, but on the south side, too. So we've sent a request in to Caltrans for a sidewalk on the south side as well. So from this picture, this is 111 right here. This is Frank Sinatra, the sidewalk ends right there. So we've requested not only that the sidewalk be on the bridge, but the sidewalk comes all the way up to where our sidewalk ends, so that we'd have a continuous sidewalk from 111 all the way to the bridge, over the bridge, and to connect to Wolfson Park. So this is something we've submitted to Caltrans. So to update the cost impacts, we've done three things. We've used the latest 2017 contract cost data. We've included these latest channel improvements as CVWD has required us, and we're adding the addition of the pedestrian south sidewalk on the south side of the bridge. In 2010, we submitted $39,390 of cost to Caltrans. Our latest update that we've sent Caltrans in 2019 is $52,876,000. So again, just the increase from 2010 to 2019, the channel improvements and the sidewalk is creating this uptick in the price. So how do you allocate $52,876,000? Fortunately for us, this is a grant project. So Caltrans share is going to be 88.53% of this project. So we are asking for 46 million, almost 47 million from Caltrans for the grant portion of this project. Currently, we're programmed for nearly 35 million. And just last month, we sent in a request for an additional nearly $12 million for the cost impacts that we've just talked about. What's left is the local share. So Caltrans picks up 88.53, and then there's a local share. CVAG will pick up 8.6% of what's remaining. That's $4.5 million. Currently, we have over $3 million that's been approved by CVAG, and so we'd have an additional request of $1.5 million for CVAG. Then the city's share is 2.86%. So that would total $1.5 million. Right now, we have programmed around $1 million. So we'd need to program an additional $400,000 for the city's share of this cost. So 52 million is definitely, almost 53 million is definitely substantial, but the city's share of it obviously is not as substantial. So schedule milestones. This is, this is a number that's very hard to pin down based on some of these requirements. We have environmental revalidation that we think is now going to be required based on the channel infrastructure. So we're anticipating 95% plan design in April of 2020, advertised for bids in September 2021. And there's quite a gap between here, there are several reasons for that. We have to go to the Army Corps of Engineers for a permit, CVWD permit, California Department of Fish and Wildlife permit, and a water board permit as well. And then we have to get Caltrans approval for the funding in between these steps as well. So we're anticipating right now, and step three is construction complete September 2023. Okay, so a little bit on the channel flow rates. We have a gauge that's in the channel. It's located just two miles downstream of Frank Sinatra, and we can get online and we can look at the flow rates that go through the channel. The average annual peak flow through the channel is 1,490 cubic feet per second. The highest recorded peak flow that we have was from Valentine's Day, where we had 24,000 cubic feet per second register on our gauge there. So this is a picture that I took on my phone close to that time, showing what 24,000 cubic feet per second looks like coming through the channel. As you can see, there's a, there's a lot of scour happening on the backside of the Low Water Crossing. I think the good news for the city is that there's still substantial room on the side of the channel so that the, the channel handled the storm very well with, obviously, room for more. Notable mention is in January 11, 2005, where there was almost 9,000 feet per cubic, cubic feet per second coming through the channel. There's a picture of that. So our design capacity for Frank Sinatra Bridge is 47,000 cubic feet per second, plus there's that four feet of space that CVWD requires from the top of the water surface elevation to the bottom of our bridge. So we, we can more than double the peak flow that we just had on Valentine's Day and still have four feet from the water surface elevation to the bottom of our bridge. So I want to do a little scope comparison. I looked at the bridges on Interstate 10 from Palm Springs to Indio to get a typical size. So Indian Canyon, Gene Autry, Date Palm, Bob Hope, all, were all around 420 feet in length. So this is a, just an aerial of Bob Hope, and what's represented there is about 420 feet in length for the bridge there. The next four bridges I picked up were Monterey, Cook, Washington, and Jefferson. Jefferson was recently completed over I-10, and I believe this project was around $50 million, and that 680 feet in length. Monroe, Jackson Golf Center, all under 350 feet. So the average bridge length that goes over Interstate 10 is 463 feet. The Frank Sinatra Bridge is going to be 1,000 feet. So substantial... So substantially, substantially larger than these bridges that cross Interstate 10. One of the reasons for that is because Frank Sinatra skews to the channel. So it has a 55-degree angle right here, and because of that, it takes a while for Frank Sinatra to get to the other side of the channel. So although our bridge isn't as high, the infrastructure to build our bridge is going to be just as bulky as these major bridges, and it's quite a bit longer. So for a graphical comparison, just on a chart here, Monterey is the only one that even comes close at 850 feet. But you can see the average bridge length at 463 feet, and Frank Sinatra Bridge at around 1,000. Now, depending on the height of the bridge, that number might increase or decrease a little bit. And I just shot all these from near maps, so don't hold me exactly to 420 feet, maybe 425. But this gives us a pretty good idea when we compare the scope of our bridge to these bridges that cross I-10. I think that's it.
Wow.
That's it. Thank you, guys. Be happy to answer any questions concerning the bridge.
Hey, Jesse, I think this is the most outstanding report I have ever seen on this from you. Your department shows that the work that has been gone into this for several years and is still going into this program because of the extent of it. And it certainly should answer the questions is why isn't this damn bridge built? So you couldn't do it better. Hopefully, this answers all the questions out there that we all get to what I just said. It's in the works. It's outstanding. It's a major project. Congratulations to your department.
Thank you. Yeah, we're trying to be thoughtful when we go through the process, because we know the heights are concerned, we know the costs are a concern. And behind the scenes, I'm not going to say it's a battle, but we are right on top of all these reports. It's just that it takes time when we're dealing with so many agencies.
Okay. Any other comments?
I just wanted to ask, Jesse, if you're standing at the eastern end of Frank Sinatra, at DeVal, we'll say, and you're looking down to the west on the street of Frank Sinatra, the houses that are to your right, that are up above the bank embankment. I've talked to a few people who live in that area, and they've always raised the question with me, is how susceptible are they to a storm, stormwater that could reach that high, that height of the channel? And based on what you've shown us here, it looks like that would be very close to impossible, but nothing is impossible. How would you answer that?
Jason, can you put the PowerPoint back up, please? So I think one of the things I would say is our bridge is not going to affect that. Let's look at one of these pictures here. Only 54 slides I should, okay. So here's February 14. This is 24,000 cubic feet per second. The channel here, so the other thing to note, the further up you go in the channel, the more capacity it has, because the channel vibes. So the higher you go, you know, you're going to be able to carry higher, more capacity. But you can see from the side of the channel right here, this is the highest recorded we have in this channel in the last 28 years, and it's nowhere even close to coming over these banks. At the point, I think these banks are overtaken. The whole city outside of the channel would also be washing away, just because for this channel to be full, the whole entire city would be full. Another thing to point out, Dana, let me see if I put this back up, is the channel, what we're going to do is we're going to extend the bank right here. So this bank is not going to come down like it does right now. So it's going to get built up and go across over to here, making this area right here less susceptible to water coming out. As you can see right now, when the water comes, you know, I mean, it's close to DeVal right there, but this is now going to come across and connect to the other side of the channel. And it looks to me, I mean, just looking there, it looks like we have probably 12 feet still left. And this was the highest recorded storm we've had in 28 years. So, you know, I think at the point where that channel is full and overflowing, we have bigger issues in the channel.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay.
Yes.
I just wanted to make one comment, because this report is quite amazing. And the time and effort you all put into it makes us realize how important it is that this channel was built so beautifully, especially in the Rancho Mirage area, where we don't have to worry about the capacity. As great as the storm as we had on Valentine's Day, it didn't even come close. And the fact that now we can rest even more assured that the sewer pipes are not going to be in danger, and we won't have to worry about any spillage. And it may take a little bit longer to complete all this, but we're certainly going to have the best possible channel amazingly done.
Yeah, and that's a good point, because not only is the 24-inch water line that runs north going to be protected, but we're going to pick up two other 10-inch water lines and run them through our bridge. We're going to pick up electric lines and run them through the bridge, and we're going to pick up fiber optic lines and run them through the bridge, as well as the frontier lines. So during this last event, we lost, and some of Rancho Mirage lost communications, because the fiber line that was on the downstream side of Frank Sinatra during the event was broken. So we've already met with all the utility companies and mapped out where the utilities go in the bridge. We just can't fit the 24-inch water line in the bridge, so that has to stay in the channel. But everything else is going to come up and out of the bridge and safely cross under the bridge.
Well, thank you for the job incredibly done.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody in the audience that has a question or a comment on this? Yes, would you like to come forward? Name and address, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm Bill Reeson, living in La Toraza, Rancho Mirage. You all know me. I have a question for Jesse. I'm a retired Caltrans highway engineer, and-
Not allowed to ask questions.
Since Frank Sinatra is not a state highway, I'm curious why they're funding this.
Well, I think there's some regional significance. And, I mean, in my opinion, what happens when we have a critical event like Valentine's Day is that's when first responders are really needed. And when we don't have a way to cross Frank Sinatra for first responders, I think that's when it becomes, you know, an importance of regional significance. So it's not that, I don't think Caltrans only funds the state highway system. They fund these projects that they find significant. So this was funded in 2012, and Frank Sinatra was never part of the state highway system, but they did approve our funding.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else? Would you like to come up?
My name is Bob Mueller. I'm a resident of Rancho Mirage. The chart that you showed that showed the apportionment of state funding and other funding in the city's portion makes it appear that the city's out-of-pocket cost is fairly nominal. I don't remember the exact number, but-
It'd be about $1.5 million.
I'm sorry?
A million and a half. Pending all the Caltrans and CVAG amendments are approved.
Thank you. So the capital improvement budget in Rancho Mirage includes a $3.1 million amount for 2018 and '19. So how does the amount that you show reconcile with the city's capital budget?
Yeah, so the Caltrans works on reimbursements. So we spend the money, and Caltrans reimburses. So for us to have the approval to spend that money, we have to budget it. And then Caltrans, once we submit to Caltrans and we show payments, Caltrans at that point will reimburse us. So we have to budget the expense. So we have approval to expend it. Once we expend it and we show proof to Caltrans, they will issue a reimbursement.
Well, just then, for 2018 and '19, the $3.1 million that's, I guess, in the budget would not be fully reimbursed. Only a portion of that would be reimbursed according to your chart, right?
Correct.
Am I getting that right?
Correct.
And there have been amounts prior to 2018. I don't know the exact number, but maybe a couple of million dollars for several years so for this bridge project. So the city is actually out of pocket a lot more than what you're showing on this chart.
No, that's not accurate. So what you're looking at is just the expenditure only. And when we get reimbursed based off the percentages that you saw on the slide, that's also revenue within our budget. So for accounting principles, it would not be accurate to show just the net result. So you have to book the gross revenue and the gross expense.
And is the city being reimbursed year by year?
Yeah, so all these federal projects have reimbursement schedules, and they're all reimbursement-based. So depending on the workflow of Caltrans, you could submit an invoice once every six months, and depending on their review process, sometimes they're quick and sometimes they're not.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions from the audience? Yes, would you come forward, please?
Thank you, Ryan Anderson, Ferber Drive, Rancho Mirage. I'm just going to say something everybody probably already knows, but I'm sure with this improvement, which, if I understand it, you want to have a flat bridge and no lumps, and that would potentially be a hazard for drivers. But anyway, I like everything I've heard so far, and I think it's great. But as you're well aware, through everything downstream, like the Bob Hope, you know, crossing, I'm sure there'll get more sediment and from the velocity of the water moving down. And I'm sure that's on your radar to adjust that later on. And anything downstream would be affected more than it is now by removing what you coined the speed bumps. Thank you.
Thank you. City manager, you have a comment? Yeah, I was just going to let the council know that after Jesse gave this presentation to the department heads, we're also going to do a separate RMTV video and have this play separately as its own little standalone program. I think that this is something after the Valentine's Day flood, the community has a lot of interest in, and I think it was a very informative update. So instead of having to watch a whole council meeting on RMTV to try to catch this, we are going to film it separately and make it its own standalone program on RMTV to kind of help spread awareness with where the bridge is at.
Well, we want them to watch the full city council meeting, don't we? Okay. Okay, any other comments, questions of Jesse? Jesse, great job as usual. Okay, we'll now move on to the public hearings for today. And we'll begin with environmental assessment case number 180004, which is the Tower Energy Neighborhood Market and Fueling Station at the northeast corner of Frank Sinatra Drive in Monterey. And presenting this today is Myna Ducek, Senior Planner. Myra?
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and council members. The following request is for the development of a neighborhood market and fueling station with the associated applications and entitlements. The project consists of environmental case number 180004, tentative parcel map number 37486, conditional use permit case number 18004, and sign program case number 18003, known as Tower Energy. The subject site is located on the northeast corner of Monterey Avenue and Frank Sinatra Drive, across Section 31, and on the border of Palm Desert. The existing 22.5-acre parcel is zoned as general commercial with a special corner overlay. A tentative parcel map application was submitted with the entitlement package to subdivide the existing 22.5-acre property into one 3.25-acre lot and a remainder parcel of 19.25 acres. The remainder parcel may be developed in the future as a shopping center or similar use as part of a master development plan. As previously mentioned, the corner of Monterey Avenue and Frank Sinatra Drive is designated as a special corner in the city's general plan. Special corners require increased setbacks, more prominent landscaping, and art features to be incorporated into the site. The site has been designed in response to these requirements. The building is substantially set back from the intersection and has been oriented to showcase the neighborhood market and effectively screen the fueling stations from immediate view. Parking areas are situated behind generous landscape buffers and the market itself. The applicant has provided the required number of parking spaces, as well as covered parking. The parking area is proposed along the front edge of the neighborhood market and has a landscape buffer adjacent to street sides. The maximum lot coverage within the general commercial zone is 35%. The applicant is proposing 6% lot coverage. There are two access points provided for the project, one off of Monterey Avenue and a second off of Frank Sinatra Drive. The access point at Frank Sinatra Drive has been designed to accommodate ingress egress for the current proposal, as well as the future development of the adjacent remainder property. The Monterey Avenue access point has been designed to accommodate right turns into and out of the project, and also allows traffic traveling southbound to turn from Monterey, left turn into the project. The Frank Sinatra entry allows for a right-in and right-out maneuver only. Both access points are proposed to be upgraded with pavers and will include a landscape divisional island in the center to better separate the entry and exit. The project is conditioned to include reciprocal access to the future development of the remainder parcel and has been designed per circulation and parking standards of the municipal code. The special corner designation provides exceptionally designed commercial centers at key intersections in the city where aesthetics and land use compatibility are of primary importance. The applicant has provided an impressive landscape plan that includes drought-tolerant vegetation, sculpture, and gabion pieces, and boulders. The trees proposed on the site include desert museum palo verde and European fan palms. Accent vegetation includes webber agave and aquatillo. Palm trees line the rear of the market and provide a striking outline to the site while softening the built environment from view. One of the distinct landscape features of the site is the proposed Corten Steel Mountain Sculpture, meant to tie into the surrounding environment and play off colors and materials found in nature. Gabion baskets are proposed throughout the site to further distinguish the site as a special corner. The architectural design concept for the project embraces the character and design elements of the California Spanish Revival style. The colors and materials that have been chosen for the project complement the desert environment and will set the standard for future development of the remainder parcel. The neighborhood market is designed to be a warm and welcoming structure resembling many of the residential homes found throughout Rancho Mirage. The exterior of the building will be painted Dunn Edwards Swiss Coffee. The front elevation of the market features an arched entry with round porch columns, emphasized with wood and stone accents. The southern elevation features a large inset stucco arch outfitted with handcrafted blue and white Mexican tile, adding an extra detail to make the market unique to Rancho Mirage. The highest roof line of the proposed market measures 20 feet in height. Variation is provided on the proposed roof lines to create visual interest, as well as to accentuate the Spanish Revival theme. The fueling station canopy is designed to complement the colors and materials utilized on the neighborhood market. The canopy is proposed at 19 feet 6 inches at the top of the structure. As proposed, both the market and fueling station canopy meet their height requirements of the municipal code. For the sign program, two wall signs are provided on the neighborhood market and will be illuminated red channel letters, shown as signs A1 and A2. They are proposed to be 33 square feet in size. Two signs are also proposed in the canopy of the fueling station. One sign is proposed on the north elevation, and one is proposed on the east elevation, shown as signs C1 and C2. The canopy signs are- elevation, shown as signs C1 and C2. The canopy signs are proposed to be illuminated red channel letters. The sign area is 18 square feet. The city's municipal code permits one monument sign per street frontage with a maximum square footage of 50 square feet per sign. The applicant has proposed two monument signs, one per street frontage, with a total square footage of 42.5 square feet per sign, and they have been conditioned to architecturally match the neighborhood market. The proposed project meets and exceeds the requirements of the municipal code. Staff has not received any outside correspondence regarding the proposed project, and staff is recommending that the city council approve all requested entitlements. That concludes my presentation. I would be happy to address any questions.
Thank you, Myna. Excellent report.
Thank you.
Can you briefly touch on the special overlay corner?
The special corner overlay requires increased setbacks than our regular commercial zone would. It requires art to be incorporated where possible, and the landscaping to be of exceptional design, which the applicant has, in my opinion, done well.
Did you have a site plan that you actually had in the presentation?
Sure.
We haven't done a special overlay corner in a long time, but it's really important for these projects.
Sure. So, as you can see, I'll point out some of the features that they have incorporated. The mountain sculpture I mentioned is going to be located right here. The setback from corner to building, excuse my poor pointer skills, is about 122 feet. From street sides, from here to here is about 70 feet. From here to here is about 60. And then, these elements right here are the gabion baskets that will be incorporated as well.
Where are the main signs located?
The main signage for the market, one will be located facing the corner over here, and then one is over the entryway right over here.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions, comments?
I do have one question, because I know, Myna, we had talked after the last council meeting in regard to the parking that would be behind the building. And I was concerned about the headlights that would be facing Frank Sinatra, as well as Monterey. Was anything able to be done with the, a hedge perhaps, so that those headlights would be sheltered?
So, there was an additional condition of approval added within the city council staff report that, I can read it, that stated, "Per Section 17.14.030, the special corner overlay requires parking fields to be screened from adjacent roadways. In order to ensure proper screening of the parking areas, planning staff will conduct a final landscape inspection of the site prior to building approval, and will be able to request additional landscaping to be added along parking areas as necessary."
Great. Thank you so much.
Yes, Dana?
Let me ask the simplest question first. I note that they have not designated yet, and I'm wondering if we have some reason to know outside of this report, as to the type or the name of the gas station. I notice that you identify the three stations we have, Chevron 76 and Shell. Have they indicated anything about what they're going to be doing? And has there been any effort to get an economy station there?
To the best of my knowledge, this will be a Tower Energy station, similar to the, similar to one existing in Palm Desert. It's its own, it's its own brand.
And the name again is what?
Tower Energy.
Tower Energy.
Yeah, this was brought forth on the, on the commission, the planning commission. That question was brought up, and it is that, yeah.
The other question, apparently there's access off of Monterey. If you're on Monterey and you're driving southbound, there's going to be a left turn pocket there to make a left turn into this station. Are there certain state, safety standards that we have to meet statewide or others? It seems like crossing Monterey is kind of always a dangerous situation at best, and I'm just wondering what we do to anticipate that danger.
The left turn was proposed by the applicant and studied in the traffic study, as well as by our city engineer, and it was found to be an appropriate turn in order to accommodate the type of development that's being proposed, in addition to alleviating some of the U-turns that would happen on the intersection of Frank Sinatra and Monterey Avenue if the left turn wasn't implemented. The traffic study didn't indicate that any safety concerns would be of issue with this proposal.
Thank you. Could you just go back for a second and look at the parcel map, which is 22 and a half acres? We're going to use about three acres for the development. The balance of that property is just going to set desert landscaping. How's it going to be handled?
It'll be untouched. It's being indicated as a remainder parcel for future development. So, in the future, there'll be a master planned development on that site, but as of right now, it's being untouched.
And what would you normally expect would be the type of business or property there?
It's zoned as commercial, so some sort of a commercial center.
Thank you.
One more question. With respect to the store, is, is the property that is immediately north of the store itself that's going to be there, you said that it's going to be unmaintained, I think. It's just going to be left in its natural condition. Do the same people own that parcel as who own the stick gas station and the store?
They're currently the same owners.
Why, what is the rationale for leaving the balance of that acreage there, which would be, I guess, about 14 acres or 13 or so?
19. 19 acres.
What's the rationale for them not having as a condition that they have to maintain it in at least a, an attractive vegetative mode? I mean, not having it, I mean, just having it in the raw seems incongruous with having a beautiful new station there.
I can take that, council member. If we required them, for instance, to go in and scrub all the vegetation and disturb the land, they didn't have to put soil stabilizers. It would be a constant maintenance nightmare, quite frankly. The native vegetation does a better job keeping the soil stable, prevents blow sand. So, it would be better to leave it untouched in its natural form for maintenance purposes.
Would it at least be maintained for trash and things of that nature?
Yeah. There would be no trash or any debris dumping going on there. It would just be left as it is today in its natural state.
If you say there won't be any trash left there, is that something we've worked out with the developers?
That's just basic city code. If there's trash on a vacant lot, then the property owner's required to clean it up.
And they are the property owners of that property?
Yes, that's correct.
So, it would be up to us then to notify them that trash collection or whatever the issue may be?
Yeah. If there was an issue on the, on the remainder vacant lot portion, then code compliance would contact them to have it cleaned up, yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Myna, did you discuss the hours of operation on this?
It will be open until 11:00 PM. I'm not sure on the start time. I know that the closing time is 11:00 PM on the market. Maybe the applicant can verify the opening time.
All right. Well, I'll open the public hearing right now and invite anyone who is here who'd like to speak on this item to come forward. Hold on. You're next.
Good afternoon, Mayor Kite, members of the city council. Christopher Brizuela here with MSA Consulting representing the applicant today. Just wanted to say thanks to Myna for the presentation. I'm available for any questions. In regard to the hours of operation, Tower Market will be operating between 5:00 AM and 11:00 PM daily.
And how will you keep clean the area that's immediately north of your property, of your project?
Well, as staff had mentioned, right now that part of that property is not going to be developed until a merchant builder comes in, or developer comes in to propose construction at that time. But I'd assume, as Jeremy had touched on earlier, that we would just meet code and work with code compliance if there are any issues on that. But we, it would be the applicant's intent to keep the project site clean and up to code.
I think everybody would appreciate that. It shouldn't be a major project, but you are going to have debris coming from the gas station, coming from the store, and where it might accumulate would be over there. So, if you can keep it clean is a benefit for you.
Right. And I think it's in the interest of Tower Market too, because they want to bring in business, and they want to make sure it looks nice and looks nice for Rancher Mirage. So, we'll work with staff and make sure that that stays the way it is.
Thank you.
If there could be trash barrels or something like that on the outskirts of the property for people to pick up and trash their own, probably would prevent some of the debris getting on the rest of the property.
So, that would be, sorry, so that would be more of a condition of approval, or?
I don't, I don't think.
They're required to work with Bureau Tech to address any trash concerns, so that will be part of their planning with Bureau Tech.
Yeah, that's fine. Any questions of the developer?
The idea, Mr. Mayor, the idea of the remaining parcel is, my understanding, is to wait to see how Section 31 develops before there is anything finalized on the balance. Is that correct?
Well, we are working on the Section 31 project. It's a different project with a different ownership team. So, it, they, right now, from my understanding, there aren't any plans to, or anything formal in terms of entitlements.
No, I understand that. What I'm saying is this, that on the 13 acres that remains, that there is no plan for development at the present time. It's sort of a wait and see how the Section 31 develops before there's any plans finalized for the 13 acres. Is that an accurate statement?
Well, there is no development proposal for the 13 acres. I assume, I'm not sure.
Mayor Kite, fellow council members, my name is Mike Rowe, Principal Engineer at MSA. Just to help answer your question, these two sites, Section 31 and the 13 acres, are independent. If one goes ahead of the other one, that's, that will work well. As they work together, we'll work with staff to make sure the connection points are there, but neither one of them will pretty much dictate the other one to go forward. Does that help?
Thank you. Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, city attorney?
Before we proceed, I just talked to Councilmember Smotrich, and it appears she might be within 500 feet of this site, her primary residence. So, she's going to recuse herself. But since it involves her primary residence, she has the opportunity to ask questions as a citizen. So, we should let the record reflect, and the minutes, the minutes reflect that the question she asked, she asked it as a citizen.
Correct. Thank you so much.
You still have to step off the dais.
Right. Okay. And thank you for clarifying that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Great. Thank you.
Is there anybody else who would like to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none. This is a public hearing, so public hearing is closed. Any last comments before we even make a motion on this item? Okay, can I have a motion, please?
I will make a motion to the city council, A, approve the filing of a mitigated negative declaration based on environmental assessment case number EA 180004, B, approve tentative parcel map number TPM 37486, C, approve conditional use permit number CUP 18004, and D, approve sign program case number SIPR 188, no, SIPR 18003.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Please vote.
And motion carries 401 with Mayor Protem Smotrich recused.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now we'll move on to item number nine under the public hearings, and this is the zoning text amendment, KCTA 19001. And it's going to be presented by our Development Service Director, Cherry Glynn.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. For your consideration is a zoning text amendment which seeks to amend certain sections of the city's municipal code as it relates to accessory dwelling units, or ADUs. An accessory dwelling unit is defined as an attached or detached residential dwelling unit that provides complete independent living facilities for one or more people. They must also include permanent provisions for living, sleeping, eating, cooking, and sanitation, and must be located on the same parcel as a single-family dwelling. They are more commonly referred to as granny flats, in-law units, or second dwelling units. So, the city's municipal code has long had provisions for the development of these units. However, recent changes to state law require amendments at the local level. And it is important to make these changes because it provides us with the ability to implement our own development standards, provided, of course, that we meet the minimum requirements of the state. So, to give you an example of what we're trying to protect here, the state allows accessory dwelling units to be a maximum of 1,200 square feet, regardless of the size of the main dwelling. So, what that does is provide the framework to allow someone who has, for example, a 1,200-square-foot main house, to then construct a 1,200-square-foot accessory dwelling unit on the same lot, which effectively turns that lot into a duplex when it's only supposed to have one home on it. So, that's just one example of what we're trying to protect here. And so, we've, we've included provisions to, to help mitigate those types of things. So, this draft ordinance is comprised of four, four different components. So, I'll just go through those real quick. The first part replaces the existing section of the code titled "Second Residential Dwelling Units" with an updated version called "Accessory Dwelling Units," which has all the provisions as required by the state, plus the provisions and protections that we are recommending. And the term accessory dwelling unit is what the state is using, so we just want to be consistent with, with state regulations. The second component of the ordinance adds a new section to the code titled "Junior Accessory Dwelling Units." This section provides provisions for the development of junior accessory dwelling units, which are accessory dwelling units that cannot exceed 500 square feet, are completely contained within the space of an existing residential structure. Now, one of the benefits of introducing a junior accessory dwelling unit ordinance is that we can require covenants be recorded on properties that contain these, and can then count them toward our affordable housing inventory. The third component of the ordinance proposes to amend the uses matrix for residential zoning districts. And this is to add transitional and supportive housing up to a maximum of six beds to that matrix. And those are things that are already allowed by the state. We have no control over those at the local level, so we just want to make it, make it known in our code that we've accounted for those things. And in fact, that particular amendment was identified as an implementation measure in last year's annual Housing Element Progress Report, which is an annual report that we have to submit to the state. So, it's just a way of cleaning up that leftover item from last year. And the last thing that comprises the proposed ordinance is simply to replace the term "second residential dwelling unit" with the term "accessory dwelling unit" throughout the municipal code, because it shows up in more titles than just the zoning title. So, that's basically it. The sole purpose of doing these things is to be consistent with state law and to help maintain some of the protections that we already have. So, that concludes my presentation. So, with that, based upon the content and the staff report, the planning commission recommends that the city council approve the draft ordinance, and I would be happy to answer your questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeremy. Are there any buildings in Rancher Mirage that are impacted by this ordinance?
Well, so basically what this does- Well, so basically what this does is allows anybody who has a single-family home or is proposing a single-family home to be allowed to do these things. So it potentially affects a lot of people, yeah, if they want to, if they want to develop an accessory dwelling unit.
They can't be connected to the, to the main residence, can they?
They can.
They can.
It can be attached or detached.
State law, let me ask you. Steve. State law says we have to adopt this perspective, is that right? These rules?
That's correct. It's related to the state's.
And so we, so we're in the process of changing our, our code, municipal code, to include these state changes.
That's correct.
Okay. What I'd like to point out, I mean, there's, as much as that probably can be impressed upon us, I have no interest in voting yes for this bill. And the reason I don't is because if I'm understanding it correctly, we would be changing our ordinance to allow, not, yeah, to allow anybody who owns the house next to you, behind you, down the street from you, around the block, anywhere, or all, altogether, for each one of them to build in their backyard, or there's a side yard, a 500-foot, some are different, there's a couple, there's three different sizes, I think, but to build a small, could be just one-room container, it has a kitchen sink, it has bathroom facilities, and it has a bed, and that the owner can rent those out to anybody they want as frequently or all of the time, and so that our residential communities, which now don't allow any such thing, as somebody coming in and being able to live in a so-called house that's 500 by 500 feet, 500 square feet, that they can do that. And the, there's one of the code sections, hang on a second, let me dig it out. Apparently, I was somewhat confused by this, but it says on page 9-16, paragraph I at the top of the page, 3I, says, "No passageway shall be required in conjunction with the development of an accessory dwelling unit." Earlier, I thought it said you had to provide, if you build it in your backyard and you rented it out to somebody, that you had to provide them access to the street, maybe through your garage, or maybe around your house to the other side. This says, "No passageway will be required in conjunction with the development of access, an accessory dwelling unit." I guess that means they can go through your house if you want them to, and, or, however. It says, "Parking requirements for accessory dwelling units." Accessory dwelling units means a new little dwelling unit on your neighbor's yard that he decided to build so that he could rent it out and make a few bucks in your non-commercial community. It says, "Parking requirements for accessory dwelling units shall not exceed one parking space per unit or per bedroom, whichever is less." These, in other words, more parking space has to be provided, at least one, to what you've got now. We've just gone through the months of agony over the rental of our properties to, through various companies that are renting them out to people, and we've limited the number of these onsite rentals to, I think Isaiah could tell me, but it's like maximum of three in a given area so that you couldn't flood them with, flood our existing units with new, any more than three units that are allowed to rent to the public on short-term rentals. Anyway, that, that's kind of a minor issue. Under parking requirements for ADUs and accessory dwelling units, that's the neighbor who's living next to you in the backyard of your neighbor's house, junior accessory dwelling unit, parking, no, parking requirements for ADUs on page 9-6. Parking requirements for accessory dwelling units shall not exceed one parking space per unit or per bedroom, whichever is less. These spaces may be provided as tandem parking, including on an existing driveway, and here we've been trying to, to get the, those rental companies to get on the driveway. Now, I'm not sure how much space we'll have, but like, who's counting? But anyway, as tandem parking, including on an existing driveway or in setback areas, excluding the non-driveway front yard setback. I guess they are saying excluding the non-driveway front yard setback, so that's the grass in your yard, you can't park there with these new, with these new buildings that we're going to have. Dana, I think Steve has an answer for some of them.
This is not going to allow these kind of units to be developed in those communities where there are CCNRs that prohibit these kind of second units and guest houses.
Well, that's great for the, for the gated communities, that's great. How about the non-gated communities which don't have CCNRs?
And, and Steve, if I can just add something, Councilmember Staff shares your frustration, because what has happened, and the reason this is before you today, is the state of California has made that decision for you. The state of California has passed a state law that says, "All cities, you have to do this. You must." And so they've removed our local authority in this area. So what this does before you today is it provides the greatest amount of protection against the things that you are concerned about, because if our municipal code does not align with state law, we're even worse off. So these changes, taking this very bad state law from a local level, they removed our authority. At least with these changes, we get still some authority over these units. If we don't make these changes today and align with state law, we're even worse off with some of the concerns you have. Now, when it comes to short-term rentals, our ordinance is still applicable. So we have rules in our short-term rental ordinance that are specific to these type of units. So they still have to come through the process, they still have to get permitted. If they violate our density or cluster rules, they will not get a permit. So from a short-term rental standpoint, they still have to follow all the same rules that they have to now. This is really.
On that point, let me ask you a question, because I appreciate what you're saying. But a short-term rental, apparently, I'm guessing, but it seems to me obvious, a short-term rental can be used, that, that, that 500-square-foot apartment that you've built in your backyard can be used for short-term rentals? And if it can, what do you think that'll do to the short-term rental percentage of occupancy around our, our, our city? And I know the state doesn't care. The state doesn't give a damn. They passed this law.
That, that's then, that's under the short-term rental rules. That's not under the rules you're considering today. So we have rules that are specific to these units already, because, you know.
But they don't say that they can't be used for short-term rentals in here, anywhere that I read.
So that would be under the short-term rental ordinance, not the, the ordinance that is before you today. The ordinance that is before you today is simply aligning our municipal code when it comes to the permitting and construction of these units, to align with state law so that we get the most protection that we have left. And frankly, it's, it's a shame that the state keeps on doing this to local government, where they remove our ability to have a say-so in how our community develops. That's not right for the state to do that, but it seems to be their playbook lately. This, you know, obviously, housing in California is a, a very big topic for the current administration. And so this is a result of them saying, hey, if, if you have a single-family residence and you want to add a granny flat, local government, you can't prevent that. And so they, they took this big fail swoop across the whole state, and they, they passed these rules. You know, instead of looking, looking at local government and say, hey, find a way to permit these, here's the issue and here's the goals, instead, they just blanket implemented rules for everybody. So the short-term rental issue is, is a, a separate and distinct issue from these ordinances that you're considering today. Within our short-term rental ordinance, we do have specific rules for these units because they're, we've had them. So for our area, the most common you would think of is a casita. We, we deal with casitas. So we have specific rules in our short-term rental ordinance to deal with these accessory dwelling units. The ordinance today is a bad situation, and I completely agree with your comments. It was mandated by the state. So what staff attempted to do with this update was still give the city as much local control as possible as allowed by state law. So these rules will help us. These rules will help the city. These rules will help our neighborhoods, because we still, because these rules will align with state law, and we will still have some say-so in setbacks and lock coverages and, and very important items. If, if we don't do this, we even lose the capability to do that. So it's a bad situation. I, I completely agree with you, but this is the best, given what the state has mandated on us. Now, for short-term rentals, I think your point is, is very well taken, and what staff will do is we will review the short-term rental ordinance to make sure we are considering some of these new implications of the state law.
On that point, on, on that point, regarding the short-term rentals vis-à-vis the state law, we came up with an ordinance, let's say we come up with an ordinance that says short-term rentals cannot include these little huts that are being built in yards and otherwise rented out. We then get sued almost immediately for saying, you can't regulate that, because the state law doesn't prevent short-term rentals from applying to these little huts, and therefore, you can't do it, you can't impose it. Now, I don't know that that's a winning argument, but it's certainly a legal argument that we'll face at some point, and it's just aggravating to the max to give in to them. I would rather go through some litigation and have them force it on us, so that our residents don't think we're caving, and I know we're not. I know staff is doing the responsible thing in presenting exactly what you have presented here, and I don't quarrel with that. But my irritation about it, both to the state and to the whole, that at least, that all of a sudden, communities like mine, that have no, no gated communities, they're average cost homes, a lot of them are currently being misused for short-term rentals, now, they see an out, they can put that in there. Who says we can regulate those when they're already regulated by state law? And I, I would rather see us go to the Supreme Court and have a decision that we lose than to give it to them, than just to say, well, okay, if you're going to stick it to us, I guess we just better roll over and enjoy it. And, and I personally don't want to do it, and I personally won't do it, and I personally will vote no, just to make a statement, and I hope we make, make that same statement as the council, and I recognize there'll be people that agree and disagree with me. But it just isn't right for government to do that to us, for the state government to impose those regulations and put us in a difficult position, at, at best with the short-term rentals.
And then, Councilmember, if I may add, some of the other things that the state allows, for instance, it specifically says if your current ordinance doesn't align with the state provisions, then it, it's null and void, but some of the development standards that the state allows at the staff level is, if somebody came in and wanted to build a, an accessory dwelling unit over their garage, a second-story element, it only has to be five feet from the setback, and they can do that at the staff level. So by, by considering this.
Isn't that wonderful?
Well, by considering what we're proposing, we could prevent those types of things. So that was part of the impetus in, in going through this exercise, was to prevent those types of things. So there are a number of development standards that the state allows as a ministerial approval, and we can protect against some of those things by virtue of adopting this.
Well, it, to me, it's the two issues. One, it destroys the residential community. It allows people who are living in neighborhoods like Tamara's neighborhoods, for example. It means that some of the people in there who don't care, who are short-term, maybe they, maybe they live in LA, come down here five times a year, they want to have it rented out, and they can now rent it out to two different groups. They got the house they could rent out, they've got the, the 500-square-foot, whatever you want to call it. And, and I, I know, I can tell, staff's done a heck of a job. You must have spent a lot of time trying to find the path that gives us the most for our city. And I'm only, I'm only, and I'm congratulating staff for what it's done. I mean, you're dealing with this, I mean, I'm sure all of you said the same thing I said.
Sure.
And probably with some more emphatic words than I used, being on TV. I have to be a little careful, but there's some legal phrases that I'd like to use, but they're not.
Yeah, absolutely. Can I go back, though? Jeremy, could you, you mentioned 1,200 feet. So this is a reduction of what the state is proposing, because it would originally be 1,200 feet?
Well, the state allows accessory dwelling units either attached or detached to be a maximum of 1,200 square feet. So what we've done, but it also says if you adopt a local ordinance, you can set your own maximums. So what we've done in our draft ordinance is to say, look, if you have, if it's a detached accessory dwelling unit, it can only be 30% as large as the main dwelling. So that, by virtue of doing that, you have something smaller than the main dwelling, and we said it can only be a maximum of 1,200 square feet. So for instance, if you had a 4,000-square-foot home or larger, you can only do a 1,200-square-foot accessory dwelling unit. But if you had something less than that, it would have to be only 30% as large. And so, I mean, the goal of the state is to provide affordable options for living, not to create duplex situations. So that's why we inserted those provisions, to try to protect against that.
Yeah. Well, 1,200 square feet is huge, in my opinion.
Yeah, but some of them are 500 square feet. The junior ones are 500.
Yeah. To go up to 1,200, that's like building another house.
Well, one of the things that really concerns me is that when they talk about six beds maximum, that sounds fine, except that what happens if people have more than six beds? And is that turning into a group home? And when you go on to, which needs to be either supervised or maybe unsupervised, because when you go onto page 9-40, it talks about group homes, which means a residential care facility that provides various types of supervised and unsupervised care, depending on the needs of the residents. And it lists a whole slew of residents that would be acceptable. So this is something that we're, we're really going into terrain that is very undesirable, and maybe we don't have as much control, or do we?
So for that section, that's a separate issue. We don't have control over anything that's six beds or less in a residential neighborhood. Anything over six beds, it still requires discretionary action by the council, so we could take that to the council. But for six beds or less in an existing home, we don't have any authority over that, as it stands right now.
So people could come in and start their own group home, even though it is a business, it would not be at our discretionary approval?
That's correct. We can't issue home occupation permits or anything for that. We have no review authority over those, and that's already in place.
Okay.
As Dana is saying, help me with this. What happens if we say no, and don't pass this? Somebody help me. What happens?
Can we have the city attorney comment on this?
Yeah, my concern would be that the, since the state is tying this to affordable housing, basically, it's tied to our housing elements, and I'm concerned that if the state determines that we're out of compliance with our housing element, they can step in and deal with our affordable housing issue, and they can order the city to not issue any building permits or approve any discretionary permits. I don't know if they'll go that far, but that's the, those are the remedies that the state would have against us. state would have against us.
So basically it sounds to me like we're being either railroaded into passing this.
Well, that's what I hope.
What Dana is saying.
Happens all the time, Charlie.
My God, oh God.
Well, you may say it's part of the times. Some, some people in our group live in gated communities and so sign of the times. Some people in our group don't. We live in residential communities. And just pick a sentence that I've got here. It says, "When the primary dwelling is less than 400 square feet, 4,000 square feet, the total area of floor space for a detached accessory dwelling unit shall not exceed 30% of the living area within the primary dwelling. And where the primary dwelling is 4,000 square feet or larger, the total area of floor space for a detached accessory dwelling unit shall not exceed 1,200 square feet." Clearly they're changing the nature of our communities. And there ought to be a constitutional argument that our extolled and super city attorney will be able to figure out and find one. I personally would rather go through a fight with them and maybe find some constitutional barriers to what they're suggesting, what they're ordering. And we really didn't talk about, even about the junior dwelling units. That's in here too, the junior ones. That's a small one, so, but we're still going to crowd a renter into it for you or allow you to bring a renter into your property.
Dana, can't, can't we table this and talk about this or what? As a-
Perhaps we can, perhaps we can table this and maybe have staff do some additional research.
That's what I'm saying.
And maybe Steve Q can do some legal research.
Well, we created-
It's, it's a, it's a legal question at that point. So-
Sorry, I'm-
It's a legal issue that I think is what I hear the council talking about specifically. So Steve, I guess from a staff perspective, the, the way that the state law is written is we're required, staff is required to issue permits for these. So if the council chooses not to pass this update and we're no longer in compliance with state law, would staff be legally obligated to issue permits for these?
Yes, pursuant to the state's standards.
So if staff, if staff received instructions from the council not to-
Oh, then we open up ourselves to litigation, litigation. This is on the agenda for the city attorneys conference in May.
Can we post?
I'm sure there's going to be a number of cities-
Why don't we put it, why don't we put it over until after May?
Yeah.
That's a good place to have it aired out because I'm sure a lot of communities are going to be very upset about this and their attorneys are going to be closely looking at it.
The risk we run though is that the state may again come in, declare our housing element to be out of compliance and shut the cities, shut the city down, basically.
Well, they probably wouldn't do that as long, if there was litigation pending, challenging it.
If I could add one more thing, so the annual housing element report, the progress report has to be submitted by, to the state by April 1st. So they're going to know exactly what we've done and haven't done in this regard. So to Steve's point, that could prompt some action on their end, not saying that it-
Well, it might. How cowardly must we be though? I mean, if they do, we either cave then or we fight. We find some legal grounds to fight it.
So for staff, for staff, council member, what I want to know from the city attorney so that the council can make whatever motion they feel is appropriate, you're putting staff in a position to violate state law. And I would like to know from the city attorney, because state law says if your rules don't align with ours, you must do this at a staff level. So Steve, what does the council need to do if they don't want to approve this and they don't want these permits issued? Is there a direction that they can provide the staff where staff is no longer violating state law and we are no longer in jeopardy? What do they need to do as a council so that it's not staff violating state law? It is staff following the direction of the council and the council violating state law?
You know, if the council directs staff to not issue these permits, it's going to be the city that's going to be on the hook, not, not staff. But again, my concern is that the state, there's a real potential that the state may cross the board throughout the entire state, go after those cities who don't adopt these regulations and shut, basically shut us down.
What are the odds are that the state would do that?
City of Desert Hot Springs is already on a list.
Without giving us an opportunity to reconsider.
Isaiah, what'd you say?
The, the state is being very aggressive with the housing issue and there were 40-something cities that the state came out and said, we're coming in after you. The city of Desert Hot Springs was one of them because they were not in compliance with their housing element. So it is a very real issue that the California League of Cities is dealing with right now. So one of our local neighbors here is on that list where the state's coming in to say, we're coming after you guys because you're not in compliance with your housing element.
They're coming after them and they'll do what? Coming, what does coming after mean? They'll-
They shut us down.
Well, no, they won't shut it. That won't be the first thing they do. They'll try to get the, the city in question into compliance. They'll give them an opportunity to be into compliance. They're not going to come in and shut down a city if they have options.
I don't know how this governor would react. I mean, he was, he's gung ho about affordable housing.
Steve, would it be appropriate to push this forward and get some additional information so we can vote on it and it doesn't have such a negative impact on the city?
It'd be interesting to see, yes. It would be interesting to see what other cities are doing. We can, we could call around, you can talk to attorneys of other cities.
Staff would just request that you would, as part of whatever action you take, if these rules don't get adopted, if you could give the direction to staff to not follow state law. And then that way staff is covered within the council's action. That's our only request.
The motion, if I were to make that motion, I would move to table the matter, subject to further input and further information, and direct staff, until the matter is resolved, not to approve any applications for any of the three categories of accessory dwelling units.
Does this have to be done before April the 1st, like was being said right over here?
That's basically a moratorium.
Where are we with that?
So we have to send the report to the state, April 1st. It's due.
Can we do this before April 1st, which is like a few days away? I'm being silly, but can we do that that quickly?
Do what?
Get, get something here going to make a decision or look more into this before April the 1st, before the deadline.
Well, we'll-
Well, that, that research has been done.
We won't be able to do much, but we can start the process. I don't know. I just don't see caving to such an outrageous law or issue. I mean, I've never seen anything like it more destructive of, of residential communities than this, this bill.
Instead of, instead of ordering staff to not comply with state law, my recommendation would be adopt a moratorium.
Well, I didn't say, I didn't use those words, but-
Right, that's the way you stop issuing permits.
What would be the motion that would take this matter off the calendar for now and impose a moratorium?
We have to come back and present the moratorium ordinance to the city council. There's a process we have to go through.
For, for a moratorium? And that's something that we cannot do now or can do now or what?
Well, you, you can do it. The issue again is just, we run, we have to do our annual progress report in the housing element. We're going to have to disclose to the state that we have a moratorium. They'll deem us non, our housing element not being in compliance with state law and then they have those remedies available to shut down our planning department, our building department, and/or to step in and take over our affordable housing program.
Okay, Steve, I have a question though, in regard to whether or not we, if we did decide to vote on this and pass it, what is to say that the government, the governor would not overturn what we have just passed? And say, well, that's not adequate, you're not complying with my original order and you're reducing the requirements that I'm putting out there and now I'm going to overturn what you have voted on?
They'd get a court order, they'd go after a court order to compel us to do it, wouldn't they?
We already made the determination that the regulations proposed by staff are in compliance with state law.
Yes.
So they are in compliance?
Yes, the ones proposed by staff.
So, okay.
Could I ask the council to consider something with this motion, however it comes out? Part D, which is amending the uses matrix-
What page are you on?
I'm sorry, nine dash two. So part D is to just amend the uses matrix to insert those two additional requirements, or excuse me, those, those land uses, which were the transitional and group housing. Again, it's six beds or less, it's already something that the state issues permits for. But that was part of an implementation measure in last year's report. So if I may just ask you to consider that one separate so that at least we can put in the report that that's been, that's been handled.
How would we do that, Steve?
If you're going to have a moratorium, I wouldn't apply it to that section.
What's it technically called?
If you're going to, if you're going to put a halt to this, my recommendation is at least do it as a moratorium, an official moratorium. Not that I think that's going to save us from, it's not going to protect us from any skate action, but-
But the uses, the uses matrix is a separate issue than the AD, the ADUs. It's just updating the uses matrix, not for accessory dwelling units, but-
Right, right. So you're suggesting that we carve that out?
Can we pass a motion?
And take action on that?
Can we pass a moratorium motion, come back with a second motion excluding from the moratorium motion that just got passed, the issue that you want pulled out?
Or introduce the ordinance with respect to that, the, the topic he's discussing.
So that would be the only one considered at this time?
So if you pass this ordinance with that limitation, it only applies to the, I forgot what they call those kind of units. Is it, no, the residential care?
Oh, yeah, transitional and group housing.
Could you phrase the motion that I or one of us would like to make to accomplish both the moratorium as well as the exception that we're talking about here?
Steve, the major concern we have here, I think, is, I mean, the city's shut down if we pass something that's not official and, and I'd hate to see the city planning and everybody else related to that come out on the wrong side of this and go into a very negative position.
I think- Keep in mind, Richard, we didn't put ourselves in this negative position. We're responding to it. And we represent a lot of people who are going to be shocked when they find out what is going on.
Yeah, I would like to see, I mean, I agree with your, your position. I would just like to see some way that we can avoid going head-on head with the state over this issue and in the meantime, impact everything in our city planning department.
Can we call a recess so I can meet with planning?
Call for recess. Okay, everybody's back and we're off of closed session?
Recession.
Recession. And it's been the recommendation of the city attorney that this item be put on hold. We'll continue on the regular agenda and then we'll come back at the end of the meeting and-
After closed session.
Pardon me?
We'll come in after, reconvene after closed session.
Yes, we'll reconvene after closed session. Okay, so that was item nine, which we were on. And that was close, that was Jeremy's deal. Okay, let's go on to item number 10. This is under the action calendar. And this is fiscal year 2018-19, mid-year budget adjustment and reserve commitment. This is going to be presented by Joseph Carpenter, finance manager, Joseph.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The item before you this afternoon requests action on two finance-related topics. So today's presentation will be split into two segments that will, one, highlight the proposed fiscal year 2018-19 mid-year budget adjustments, and two, detail staff-proposed realignments of the general fund reserve balances. The current operating budget adopted by city council on June 21st, 2018 includes approximately $27.3 million in revenue and $26.5 million in expenditures for a projected surplus of approximately $780,000. Staff is proposing mid-year budget adjustments of $175,000 to revenue and a reduction in operating expenditures of $357,000, which would increase the projected operating surplus to approximately $1.3 million. The detail of these proposed adjustments will be covered over the next two slides. The table on your screen details the $175,000 in proposed operating revenue adjustments for the fiscal year. Staff anticipates the city will receive $125,000 more in sales and use tax, the result of increased sales tax collections from ranch and ranch businesses, and $50,000 more in building permit fees due to increased building activity. As shown on your screen, staff is proposing to decrease budgeted operating expenditures approximately $357,000 for the fiscal year. General fund operating expenditures are broken down into three object levels. Personnel, which includes salaries and benefits, operations and maintenance, and department equipment. The proposed $22,800 increase in personnel represents three months salary and benefits for a new audiovisual technician. This position would allow for the expansion of programming on RMTV. The proposed decrease in the operations and maintenance object level is comprised of three items. A $500,000 decrease in the operating transfer out to the FIRE fund due to an increase in revenue from the Community Services District, or CSD. The consideration of a $100,000 donation to Eisenhower Medical Center. This would represent the second of 10 pledged donations, so long as the city has a surplus. And a $20,000 adjustment for professional technical services for RMTV. In addition to mid-year adjustments for the general fund, staff is also proposing adjustments to four of the city's special revenue funds. On the revenue side, offsetting $500,000 adjustments to the FIRE fund are being proposed to account for the projected increase in revenue from the CSD. The projected increased collections in the CSD fund from structural fire tax and parcel charges are transferred to the FIRE fund, which increases the revenue in the FIRE fund and in turn decreases the general fund subsidy the FIRE fund receives. This is why the general fund expenditures are proposed to decrease. Two special revenue fund expenditures are being proposed. An increase of $32,600 to library and observatory salaries and benefits, which represents various staff realignments and three months salary benefits for a new observatory coordinator. The second budget adjustment is an increase of approximately $26,000 to housing authority salaries and benefits, which represents three and a half month salary and benefits for the previously approved housing administrative analyst position. The general fund summary recaps the impact of the proposed general fund adjustments. As highlighted on your screen in green, the current adopted budget projected a total surplus of approximately $2,400. The proposed mid-year adjustments covered in today's presentation intend to increase the total surplus, $532,200, resulting in a new projected total surplus of approximately This concludes my presentation on the mid-year adjustments. The city's director of administrative services, Mr. Kofi Antabom, will now discuss the staff's proposed reserve commitment realignment in greater detail. Can you bring up the PowerPoint again for Kofi's slides?
Yes, please. Thank you, Joseph. Good afternoon, council. As Joseph indicated, this segment of the presentation this afternoon relates to proposed realignments of the- realignments of the general fund reserves. Annually, I think, all right, annually, a subcommittee of two council members and staff perform a review of the general fund reserves in accordance with the city's fund balance policy. The fiscal year 2018-19 mid-year budget adjustment subcommittee, which consists of Mayor Kite and council member Hobart, along with staff, perform the review of the general fund reserves in conjunction with the mid-year budget. Based on the review, increases and decreases to four of the six reserve accounts and commitment of unassigned fund balance are being requested. The table on page 10-5 of the staff report, as displayed on your screens, summarizes where the general fund reserves are currently and what the proposal is to realign these reserve balances. I'll briefly summarize and provide the definition for each reserve category. So on your screens, the first category, which is the unassigned fund balance, basically represents a group of reserves that the city council has not designated for any specific purpose. The unassigned balance, as you can see on your screen, in the first, the second column on your screen, it's approximately $17 million. Approximately $11 million of this balance is proposed to be committed to other reserve categories, as I will discuss shortly, but, and bringing, in doing that, it brings the unassigned fund balance to $6 million. The next category on your screen is the prudent reserve. This is set aside for future revenue shortfalls. Specifically, if a reduction in future state revenues or a decline in economic conditions lead to a 9% or more reduction in total general fund revenues, this category of, the prudent reserves, may be utilized to maintain levels of service to the city and its residents. At this point, staff is not making any recommendation or any change to the $25 million in prudent reserves. The second category is the capital improvement reserves, and this is approximately $6 million, as you can see on the screen. Staff is not recommending any change to this reserve category as well. The next category is the disaster recovery reserves, which currently sits at $11 million. In the event of a major earthquake or a disaster that requires the activation of the city's emergency operating center, this reserve will be utilized to reestablish city services, fix roads, streets that are damaged during a major event. A reduction of $6 million is proposed to bring this reserve balance to $5 million. Staff believe that should there be a major disaster, the reimbursements that the city will be receiving from FEMA, California Office of Emergency Services, insurance on city facilities, along with a $5 million reserve in this category, would be adequate to restore city services. The next category of reserves is the economic development reserve, which currently sits at approximately $1.1 million. Originally, this reserve was set at $5 million, and so it's been spent down over the years. And basically, what staff is doing at this point, or recommending, is to fill up this reserve category back to $6 million. And mainly, this reserve is set aside for continued economic development efforts for the former redevelopment agency. As you're all aware, with the loss of redevelopment funds, this reserve serves as the primary funding for economic development efforts within the city. The increased balance will be utilized, in part, to fund the city's brand enhancement projects. The concepts, which includes median improvements, signage, and enhanced intersection, will be presented to council at a later date. The next category of reserves is the public safety reserve. Currently, this reserve is set at $5 million, and it's set aside for public safety needs of our community. As discussed in previous city budget presentations, due to the escalation, escalating costs of public safety and the city's commitment to, of placing high priority on providing the absolute best in public safety for our community, an increase of $5 million, bringing this total reserve to $10 million, is proposed to allow the city to continue to meet the operational and capital needs of public safety and never compromise service to our community due to cost. Part of this increase will fund the city's share of the new ladder truck, which is approximately $400,000, and it is anticipated that a minimum of $1 million annually will be drawn down from this reserve for public safety operations beginning in the, in year two of the next two-year budget cycle. The next category, which is the last category of the reserves, is the library and observatory reserve. This reserve originally was set at $5 million, and that was when this was, we only had the public library. Now we have an observatory, and as you're all aware, the public library and observatory are the pride and joy of the city, and it does a lot of things for this city as well as the entire Coachella Valley. The purpose of this reserve is to ensure that there is adequate funding for any needs the library and observatory may have. Operationally, the library is self-sustaining. However, any capital needs are funded out of the general fund using this reserve. As the library and observatory continue to grow and expand, the increased reserve will ensure there is financial security and also continue to fulfill the capital needs of the library and observatory. This reserve policy of the city represents how the council sets aside the city's resources, and this is totally subject to council's action. And so the proposals that are made this afternoon, if in the future this policy needs to be amended, just as we are recommending today, based on recommendation from the subcommittee, staff is going to bring a recommended action back to the council. And before I end, I would like to thank the fiscal year 1819 mid-year budget subcommittee and staff for all the efforts and work throughout, their efforts and work throughout this process. And that concludes our presentation. Joseph and I are available to present any, to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Kofi, and thank you, Joseph. Are there any questions on 10A, which are the mid-year budget adjustments, or 10B, which is the fund balance policy? Any questions or comments?
No.
Yeah, I'd like to congratulate the staff. It's an outstanding mid-year budget adjustment, one we can all be very proud of. Congratulations.
Iris, did you have a comment?
No, I would just love to have somebody describe for our audience what the Community Services District is, what it does, where it gets its money, and how it disseminates it.
So the Community Services District collects taxes. So it collects taxes. All of those funds are then transferred over to the fire fund to help fund fire services. It doesn't collect enough taxes for the fire services we provide, so that's why the general fund backfills and provides a subsidy.
Great, thank you.
Okay, if there are no questions or comments, let's have a motion for 10A first and then do 10...
All right, I'll make a motion that the city council and the board of directors of housing authority, library and observatory, and community services district, A, adopt joint resolution numbers 2019, next in order, 2019 HA, next in order, 2019 LB, next in order, and 2019 CSD, next in order, approving and adopting the fiscal year 2018-2019 mid-year budget adjustments. And...
I think we can do both, can we not?
Yes.
And B, adopt resolution number 2019, next in order, approving commitment of certain reserves for specified purposes consistent with the fund balances policy.
I'll second that.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. I'd like to go out to the public and see if there's any questions or comments on this item. Seeing none, we'll come back and vote on it. Please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Joseph. Thank you, Kofi. You did a good job.
Good job.
Thank you.
I will now move on to resolution, our number 11, resolution number 2016, next in order, delegating to the city manager, emergency contract authority pursuant to public contract code sections 22035 and 22050. And this will be covered by our city attorney, Steve Quintanilla.
Mr. Mayor, you just gave the staff report.
Okay.
So the law, state law allows the city council to delegate the authority to declare an emergency for purposes of, you know, fixing it to the city manager?
So what would be an example of that, Steve?
Frank Sinatra Drive and Country Club Drive.
Okay.
Otherwise, we have to come back and go out to bid, back with the proposals, and that takes...
Is there any dollar limitation?
No.
The items do come back to the city council. So city staff, at the next available meeting, will come back, give the council the process, and again, this has to be under the emergency declaration.
Okay. Questions, comments from staff? Anybody in the audience like to question this item, discuss it? Seeing none, we'll move back to council, and can I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Item number 11.
Okay, in fact, I'll just repeat pretty much what you said, that the city council adopt resolution number 2019, next in order, delegating to the city manager that in the case of an emergency, the city may repair or replace a public facility and take any directly related and immediate action required by that emergency pursuant to public contract code sections 22035 and 22050.
I would second the motion. I'd like to make an amendment if it's applicable. Steve, I'd like to add to this, semicolon at some point, that the city manager is authorized to appoint a member of staff as his alternate, alternate, is alternate, period.
We can just add designee after his name, I mean, after his title.
Iris, is the amendment okay with you?
It's perfect.
Okay.
Does it work okay for you, Isaiah?
Yes, sir.
Oh, I already have it in there. It's already in there. Says that pursuant to public contract code section blah, 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 city manager or designee is hereby delegated.
I don't believe it.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Would you please vote?
Yes, we'll vote.
And motion carries five zero.
Okay, thank you. Now move on to item number 12, resolution number 2019, next in order, approving the project list to be funded by the road maintenance rehabilitation program in accordance with Senate Bill One, and Jesse Eckenroth will be discussing this, director of public works. Jesse?
Thank you, Mayor, city council. This will not be 52 slides worth of a presentation. This is basically just a formality to participate in receiving the SB one or the gas tax dollars for our city. So attached to the resolution is a project list. The state requires a project list to be adopted by resolution. That gets sent to the California Transportation Commission, and what they look for are these five items that are listed on this PowerPoint. It's a description, which we're going to do asphalt replacement on Monterey between Heavely and Whitewater Channel, the bridge at Whitewater Channel. Estimated cost is $950,000, and the project schedule would be fall of 2019 with an estimated life of 20 years. So again, the, the state does not require us to actually do this project. They just require that our project list is adopted by council. So this is a formality in that process. Just for a little bit of, I guess, knowledge of where those, how much of the dollars are getting spent when we buy gas are on tax, if you could put the next slide up, please. I just did a little breakdown here of gasoline cost components. So starting from the bottom, there's a two-cent underground tank fee. Then next is a state and local sales tax of $9 or 9.62 cents. This is based on $3.50 for a gallon. Federal excise taxes of 18.4 cents, and then the state excise tax, which is the yellow, at 41.7 cents. That's the realm that the SB one taxes get collected inside of. So it's that little portion right there where SB one taxes are collected, and that's what's going to go to fund this roadway project. So total taxes and fees on a $3.50 gallon of gas is approximately 72 cents. So that's just a little bit of insight to where that SB one tax dollars collected up. So that concludes my presentation. Be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, questions, comments? Okay, we're slowly losing our audience. No comments from the audience? So can I have a motion, please?
I will make a motion. The city council adopt resolution number 2019, next in order, approving the project list to be funded by the road maintenance and rehabilitation program in accordance with Senate Bill One, the Road Repair and Accountability Act of 2017.
Okay, there's a motion and a second on item number 13. Please vote. I mean, item number 12.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay, now moving on to the last item on the agenda, item 13, resolution number 2019, next in order, approving a revised public educational and government channels programming policy, and this will be presented by the library director, Aaron Espinoza. Aaron?
All right, thank you, Mayor. In December of 2011, the city of Ranch Mirage adopted the public education governmental channel policy pursuant to the Digital Infrastructure and Video Competition Act of 2006. Under the act, the purpose of the PEG channel is to broadcast locally produced video programming. The content is to be provided over the PEG channel and should be responsive, be the responsibility of the city or its designee. The city now desires to revise the original policy to, among other things, authorize the city manager to determine PEG channel programming and content, expand programming to include business outreach and community event updates, and no longer permit sponsorships. The specific goals set forth in the revised policy are to increase resident access to local government and community meetings through various mediums, including live coverage of local government meetings via cable television, provide public information about government programs, services, projects, and public safety in Ranch Mirage, keep residents informed of activities within the community, and promote upcoming community events through the Bulletin Board Service, provide businesses the opportunity for community outreach and subject to the rules set forth in the revised policy, provide information during local emergencies, and ensure that programming is nonpartisan and nonideological. It is staff's intention to take Ranch Mirage Television to a new level of branding, marketing, and programming for our residents. It is our request today that the city council consider and approve the revised public education and government channel programming policy. Thank you, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Aaron. Any questions, comments?
I do have a comment. I want to congratulate everybody that worked on this, that seen that we are broadening the use of our wonderful RMTV programming.
Just as a question.
Yes?
As a question, Charlie did that magnificent interview of Ruth, I mean, of Kate Ballard, and would this passage of this preclude a similar situation? I can see where it's good in general, there are times when it hurts, but...
Yes.
Yes, it would.
Yes, it would, and Isaiah can explain it, what we came to. Go ahead, Isaiah.
Well, and I think just, so yes, the answer is yes, and to, one of the most common questions we get with RMTV is the quality of the video. So staff shoots everything in high definition, and it's actually a spectrum that lowers the quality. So one of the things that Jason Howdegay, our senior information services manager, has been working on with Spectrum, is to try to get them to upgrade the equipment on their end so that our high-definition video isn't taken and downgraded. end so that our high-definition video isn't taken and downgraded. But it does take some work on Spectrum's side, but when they do make that change, staff is already there and ready, and we're currently shooting in high definition. So we hope that that change on the Spectrum side will come sooner rather than later, but that is something that Jason is also trying to push them to do.
Okay. Great, thank you very much. RMTV certainly has grown over the last few years, and we just have to improve it all the time, and I think that's what we're doing here, so. Can I have a...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
If I can make a comment also, in answer to maybe Dana's question in regard to the interview done by Charlie, there was a safety video that I made in regard to being prepared for a disaster in your home. It played many times over the course of a couple of years at my request. Last year, I said, how about if we remove that, and so there would not be any perceived conflict of interest in regard to a city official doing any of the shows that would be aired on RMTV.
Yeah, nothing prevents an elected official from appearing on RMTV during a sanctioned city event. You know, so there's examples listed in the policy, so obviously, a council meeting is obvious. If there's a candidate debate forum, that can go on. The mayor's commercial for ANA, so if it is a sanctioned state of the city, is another example. If it is a sanctioned city event, there, there's nothing that prevents an elected official from being on RMTV.
Okay, thank you.
One additional question that I have for Aaron, because I know that a couple of times people have called me and said, is there any chance we can put up on the screen a schedule of events so people know when to tune in and how they can see who's, who's going to be presenting, if there are lectures, so they don't come in in the middle of it?
Yes, Jason and I had a meeting this week with Spectrum, and that is something that they are putting on their agenda, and it is a third-party vendor that they work with, and so they are putting us in contact with that third-party vendor so that we can do so. And in the meantime, we are working on a graphic design that would enable you to see it on the, the screen, not necessarily on a TV guide.
Yeah, and, and also they're working, Iris, on updating the whole programming, so it's more like a real, real TV program representing Rancho Mirage.
With a star performer.
But I, I was, I was.
Okay.
Only the best for Rancho Mirage.
The best of Rancho Mirage.
I need a motion, please?
All right, I'll make that motion. The City Council adopt resolution number 2019, next in order, approving a revised public educational and governmental channels programming policy and not including Charles Townsend.
There's a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We'll now recess into closed session. Steve, you want to cover those items?
Sure. The council is going to recess into closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 55956.9 regarding one potential significant exposure to litigation item, and the two, the following two cases, Veronica Juarez versus City of Rancho Mirage, and New Circular Wireless DBA AT&amp;T Mobility versus City of Rancho Mirage.
Okay, thank you, Steve. And before we recess, I'd like to announce again that this meeting is being adjourned to April 9, 2019, and April 4 meeting will be canceled.
We're coming back, we're coming back in a few minutes.
Yeah, but I got to do a few hours first, for an hour. Okay, so we'll recess into closed session.
And then we'll reconvene. And then we're coming back.
Okay, folks, we're going to reconvene our previous meeting in closed session, and we're going to reopen public hearing, item number nine. And is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and come back to the council for a motion, please.
All right, Dana, you're on. Do you want me, I'll make the motion? All righty, I will, oop, on glasses, I will do, I will do that. Item number nine, the Planning Commission recommends that the city council introduce ordinance number, next in order, first, reading of an amendment, section 17.30.200, second, residential dwelling units, and adding section 17.30.205, junior accessory dwelling units. Move, you want me to start over?
Yeah.
Okay.
Skip, please.
All right, so what do you want me to say? Move to introduce?
Yes.
The ordinance number, next in order, first reading, amending section 17.30.200, second residential units, and adding section 17.30.205, junior accessory dwelling units, to chapter 17.30, standards for specific land uses of title 17, zoning, so the Rancho Mirage Municipal Code, amending section 7.08.012, allowable residential zoning use, permit requirements, and project review authority of chapter 1708, residential districts of title 17, zoning of the Rancho Mirage Municipal Code, and amending miscellaneous reference in the Rancho Mirage Municipal Code, consistent with state use of accessory dwelling units.
Thank you, Charlie. Can I have a second, please? Any questions or comments on this before we vote? Okay, please vote.
And motion carries 4-1, with Councilmember Hobart voting no.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, before you adjourn, just want to announce there is no reportable action taken in closed session.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Before we adjourn, I'd like to announce that this meeting is being adjourned to April 9, 2019, and the April 4 meeting will be canceled. Again, please take notice that the next regular meeting of the city council will be held on Tuesday, April 9, 2019, at 1:00 p.m. And the meeting is adjourned.